Everyone, we're about to start. If you're able, if you could rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight is a special night as we are swearing in a couple of new town council members. And those online, if you wouldn't mind just showing your faces, we have a lot of people here in the audience as well. Thank you. So the first will be the swearing in. Ron, is that something that you do?
So the newly elected council members can just please read from their oaths that have been printed out and given to them, think to stand and raise your right hand. We do have a notary in the audience, Dave Walton, he will sign them after they're read.
Just unmute.
And you can, you can.
Together.
You can read together, please.
You read it together. Yes.
But please use your own name.
There you go.
I, Carlo Cola.
I, Tamara Leonard.
Do swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland and support the Constitution and laws thereof. And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of council member according to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Thank you very much. And you can sign those and give those to Dave. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations, council member. All right. Next item is election of council officers and committee liaisons. I, okay, is it better now? I can, yeah, okay, good, good. Thank you for that. So if permitted, I'd like to put forth the following folks for different positions. For mayor of the town of Chevy Chase, Barney Rush, vice mayor, myself, Irene Lane, secretary Rich Brancato, Tamara Leonard as community liaison, and treasurer Carlo Colella. Is there any second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. Okay, there you go.
Congratulations to you.
Yeah.
Madam Vice Mayor. The next resolution that we need is for the positions of the liaisons of the different council members to the five committees. Is there someone to be willing to make that resolution?
Okay, thank you.
And I'm Nate Barney Rush to be the liaison to the long range planning committee, Irene Lane, the community relations committee, myself as the public services committee, Tamara is the climate and environment committee, and Carlo as the land use committee.
Second.
Somebody else got a second.
Second, second, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approved. Great. Well, I feel very honored to serve the town again as mayor. And I just had a couple of words to say. First of all, as Irene had mentioned at the annual meeting, thanks to Steph Martz and to Joy White, who had served previously on the council and did a very good jobs, and really appreciate their good wise counsel. Secondly, to certainly welcome our new council members, we lost a lawyer but gained a lawyer, and we've also gained an engineer. So I like to think that we're truly a council fit for purpose for what we need to undertake for this coming year. So very pleased that you two are joining the council and stepping up to work. Thank you. The, I think by way of background, just quickly with Tamra, with your experience in the town and having worked with the community relations committee, you know a lot of people and a lot of the issues. And Carlo, as having previously been the chief administrative officer of the University of Maryland, you've obviously undertaken enormous sets of challenges that I dare say are even, even probably more, more of a mountain to climb than some of the issues we have in the town of Chevy Chase. So in any event, I'm very pleased to have your background and skills join the council. And then I also want to reach over and thank Irene, as I did also at the annual meeting, for having done an outstanding job as mayor for these past two years. And as I mentioned before, but there's a different group, so I want to repeat myself. It is one thing to take on a lot of issues that happen inside the town. It's even greater challenge to take on an important issue that affects all the other communities and which in this case required going to getting support from the state. And this has to do with the clarification of the authority the town has over multifamily housing. And she led the coalition that was comprised of all the communities in the vicinity, working very closely with the state delegation to obtain the law that clarifies our authority and makes a huge difference to this town. So that was really an outstanding accomplishment. And Irene, thank you very much for what you've done for the town. And finally, before we proceed, I have one more good omen to mention. The clock above the doors of the town hall is actually on correct time. This is a truly rare event. I don't know if I've seen this more than once in the. No. If it were truly stopped, it would be correct twice a day. No, I've noted that difference. So I think I take that as a good omen for the coming year. With that, I don't see Jared Solomon as having arrived yet, so we will just move on.
Oh.
I'm sorry?
Might be on the phone outside.
He's on the phone outside. Okay. You want to, Dave, do you want to let him know that we're ready for him to? We won't bite. Hello, Jared, please come in. Well, you're busy. Please come on in. Jared, you know Rich Brancato? And we have two new council members, Tamara Leonard. I'm the mayor for the coming year, and Irene is the vice mayor.
Good to see you. Thanks for coming.
Nice to see you. Let me introduce delegate Jared Solomon, who has now been in office for five years, I believe. Seven, seven, my heavens. This is my seventh year, hard to believe. But has really been an outstanding representative for our community. Very accessible, works incredibly hard on our behalf. The clarification of our authority that I just mentioned in regard to Irene, owes an enormous amount of tributation to Jared. He really led the effort in the state assembly to obtain that clarification. So we're very grateful for all the work you did and on many other issues as well, including the Purple Line, which also is very important to us. So anyway, thank you very much, Jared, and we look forward to what you have to tell us tonight.
Yeah, thank you Barney. And I've got end of session letters for folks. I'll just sort of pass I know you all have a busy agenda tonight, so I am going to be relatively brief. And I'm going to just try to sort of focus more on some of the work that we've done, bless you, in coordinating with the town. But I do want to start off, I want to thank the new mayor, former mayor, the continued dynamic duo of Barney and Irene, who have just been absolutely incredible partners. I think at one point, we probably were talking, if not weekly, every other day during the, during the heat of session, and have spent lots of time on the phone on a lot of issues for the town. And you all are really lucky to have them continuing to, to, to labor on your behalf on the council. I don't know if Todd is here, but. Hi Todd. But you also have a wonderful manager, and I see Ron there, who's a great, who's your great village, town attorney. Got my Chevy Chases all scrambled. But Ron was a wonderful partner on our legislation. Or you can just set it down, we'll grab them, grab any extras later. And I also, I want to acknowledge and congratulate Carlo and, 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 sorry, Tamara, thank you. I had it written down and I can't read my own writing. And I want to thank, I don't know if Stephanie and Joy are here, but appreciate their service. Probably the most difficult service is serving on your local, local, local municipality, your local council. It's probably even worse than serving on the county council or in state legislative matters because you're literally dealing with your neighbors and very personal, very personal, close issues. So appreciate you being willing to hop the grenade and serve your community because you want to make the town a better place. And certainly, we don't live in the town, we live just up the road in Kensington, but this is such a special place. I want to congratulate you all in Zimmerman Park and Fossil Path. It was lovely to have the ribbon cutting. And I know I saw on your agenda for later, later tonight, you have the possibility of submitting some financial support to the outdoor classroom at Rosemary Hills. I have a five, soon to be five-year-old, he's turning five tomorrow, and he will be enrolling in kindergarten at Rosemary Hills for the fall. So he is very excited. I was really excited to see that. That's wonderful. So I wanted to, I won't spend too much time on sort of the broader issues that we've dealt with in Annapolis. I want to touch on the budget. I serve on the appropriations committee as the, the chair of the personnel committee. So in that role, we have oversight over state personnel matters on collective bargaining issues. And along with delegate Chetty, who is another one of our delegates from District 18, she and I both serve in the leadership on the appropriations committee. So we get to help shape the budget. And we're both part of the speaker's leadership team. Delegate Chetty serves as our caucus chair. I serve as the deputy speaker pro tem. And so for any of you who are paying attention, you know, this year in particular was probably one of the toughest budget years that we've had, probably in the last three or four decades, maybe even more. And it gets more difficult every day with, with the issues coming out of Washington. And so, you know, we really, that took up frankly, the bulk of our time, particularly those of us who serve on the fiscal committees. And we left Annapolis with, we think, as good of a fiscal plan as we possibly could. Again, pending further calamities coming out of, out of Congress from the executive branch, but we ended, we left, we will end this fiscal year with a surplus of about $300 million that we can set aside. We, you know, worked really closely with the governor. We cut about $2 billion from the budget overall. And, you know, we heard from many of you, in particular, on the cuts for the developmental disabilities community, and was something critically important to our county. It's something that really Montgomery and Maryland have been a leader on. And we don't always agree with our governor on everything. And so we worked, particularly delegate Chetty, hand in glove with the community and with the executive branch to restore almost all of those cuts and really make a lot of policy changes along the way to DDA, the Developmental Disabilities Administration, to preserve those programs, make them more efficient, and make them work better for, for the people most in need. A couple of other points in the budget that I did want to mention that are particularly important to our local community. So one of the things that I have worked on that we think has the opportunity to really grow the county's economy and the regional economy is the Institute for Health Computing, which is North Bethesda. And I think I may have mentioned this in previous meetings here, because it's really, really significant. It's the opportunity to sort of create what is the next frontier of supercomputing and health computing just up the road. It brings together the unbelievable supercomputing power and AI know-how from the University of Maryland, coupled with the medical, medical knowledge and medical school from UMB, which is the University of Maryland's graduate programs, and then brings in the, you know, 2 to 3 million anonymized health records from the University of Maryland Medical System, which covers the entire state and is actually one of the most representative samples of any health population in the world. Maryland is sort of America in miniature, as some of you may have heard before. And so being able to take that anonymous medical data, feed it into the computer work that comes out of College Park, really has created potentially the next frontier for medicine right here in North Bethesda. And the eventual vision is to not only have a center, but have sort of a flagship building that will then lead to sort of a similar to the Research Triangle in North Carolina, or, you know, the, the Boston collaborations that you see in the Massachusetts area. And so, you know, we did a ribbon cutting for the two-year anniversary and an expansion this past fall. And NIH and FDA actually now have co-located approval staff who are now embedded in the IHC. And so last year, we were able to pass a bill that was, that was one of my top priorities to get dedicated funding for the IHC, to provide operating support to see that expansion. And we were able to protect that in the budget. We're going to see that hopefully continue to grow, which is really critically important. And then some even more local pieces, we were able to get 3.5 million dollars for, for upgrades and repairs to Strathmore Music Hall, which is such an important part of the arts community in Montgomery County. We got $1 million for the continued renovation of Noise Library in Kensington, which if any of you have small children or have small children, you know how, how much of a gem that is for the community. One of the other pieces that we've been working long and hard on, particularly with the Wheaton Community in Silver Spring, we've had an increased epidemic of opioid drug use among young people. And so one of the things we have heard loud and clear from the community and to local nonprofit providers that are working directly with families is a lack of treatment facilities specifically for young people. And so we were able to find savings in the budget. The Department of Juvenile Services had money sort of earmarked for a treatment facility that, that is open in Frederick for some upgrades. Turns out they didn't need quite as much. So we were able to earmark and specifically essentially fence off a chunk of money for almost a mothballed facility than the, the noise, the other noise facility that's up to 70 in Montgomery County that DJS has sort of been keeping to the side. And we are going to be able to use that in concert with county resources to be able to open, we hope, knock on, knock on wood, a dedicated treatment facility for youth addiction issues for Montgomery County residents, as well as some other juvenile treatment programs. So that was really exciting. And in recent conversations with DJS, they actually think they're going to be able to do it a lot quicker than even we thought originally. So that was really positive. And then the last sort of hyperlocal issue for you all, you know, again, in looking at ways in which we could use current resources that we have in a much better way. One of the things that the Maryland Transportation Administration, excuse me, the Transit Administration had put in the budget was a request for Purple Line police officers for about $7 million. And we said, whoa, 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 we've got two and a half years before this line is going to open. You know, even, even if there's going to be a lag time to hire police officers, you don't need that much time. So we were able to take that money and we created a $3.5 million grant for both Montgomery and Prince George's County to focus on pedestrian safety improvements specifically for Purple Line communities. So the county is in the process of working with the State Department of Transportation and getting that funding and figuring out how to use it. It's a drop in the bucket for what we know we overall need for pedestrian improvements around Purple Line stations, but it's a, it's a step in the right direction. And it's a, you know, an example of where we were able to take money that was in the budget already in a very difficult fiscal year and use it for immediate needs and purposes that are really beneficial to our community. So I wanted to make sure you all knew that. And then I wanted to end with just really focusing on, you know, it is a huge priority, not only for me, but your entire District 18 delegation. Again, I mentioned delegate Chetty, they're also represented by delegate Aaron Kaufman and Senator Jeff Wallstalker. We are really lucky. We actually have eight municipalities in our district, the Chevy Chase corridor, and then Garrett Park, and, and the town of Kensington. So we spent a lot of time working with our municipal, our municipal leaders to make sure we're getting the support at the state level that you all need in your communities. And so, you know, some of the things that we've done, particularly with the town, Barney mentioned, which was really an incredible collaboration. It was House Bill 1167 over about the last year. You know, we worked with, with Ron, with the 10 other municipalities in the county that this impacted to really clarify some code that had been on the books since 2006 that gives local municipalities sort of, it's not, it's not zoning authority, but allows some additional restrictions, some additional, some additional qualifications for housing in the municipalities that allows things to continue to fit in with the footprint of the neighborhood. And because of some ambiguity in the language from the original statute in 2006, coupled with the county's, you know, kind of increasing, increasing desire to open up housing a little bit more, we wanted to make sure that, that that law was updated, that it reflected what the plans really were, it reflected the municipality's engagement. And so, again, working collaboratively, in one session, we were able to get a bill unanimously through the general assembly. And fingers crossed, I think it is going to be signed next week by the governor, really clarifies in a way that does not prohibit housing, but allows it to be, again, part of the fabric of neighborhoods, clarifies that all of the municipalities covered under the statute, including the town, the village, Kensington, the town of Tacoma, the city of Tacoma Park, allow you all to be able to, again, properly integrate up to a quadplex. So it now clarifies in the law that it is single family, it is duplex, triplex, and quadplex, which is the original intent of the legislation, is what the county's and the planning board's intent was. So, and I have to say, the planning board was an incredible partner. Their planning director, Jason Sartori, who some of you may know, was with us the entire way. And so it really was a collaboration between the planning board, the council, your local council, all of our other municipalities, and, and our team in the general assembly. And so we're really happy and proud that that bill, we got it through. Things that deal with thorny housing issues often do not sail through. And so we were really glad, I think it reflect, reflected the really wonderful partnership and the fact that, that everybody was, was coming from the right place. And we just wanted to make sure that we were able to get the language correct. And then some other things that we work on that don't require legislation, but we spend a lot of time working with the, the town and the state highway administration and the Department of Transportation. So Barney mentioned the Purple Line. What did it take? Five years, four, six years? Was it 2020 that we had that meeting before the pandemic in our office?
Yes, that was 2020, but we started lobbying on that issue in 2018.
Yeah, yeah. So we, we were able to secure an agreement prior to the pandemic with, with the previous administration at, at MDOT to agree that we would not have horns every single time a train goes into the tunnel, that it would only be when somebody is actually on the tracks. They have these little devices that, you know, the, the workers will put on that sort of alerts the system that somebody is there. And then we had the pandemic, we had a new contractor came in, come in, they couldn't necessarily say that they were going to honor previous agreements. We just got some great news this past week that MDOT will continue to honor the original agreement that we made. So that's a huge win, we know, especially for residents who are, who are directly nearby the Wisconsin, Wisconsin underpass. We're working with, we're going to have a meeting probably next week or the week after with the state highway administration and the town on issues on Bradley. Obviously, those two horrific crashes have only heightened the concerns. We've been having some really good conversations with SHA over sort of reworking some of Bradley, but this obviously has heightened the need. And I did get some good news actually from our, our folks, our partners at the Montgomery County Police Department Enforcement Unit, that they actually think they could put a camera going westbound, they can put it on a pole as opposed to having to take up a huge parcel. So that may be another option to get the camera going now having it, now having it go in both directions. So that was positive. That was literally late breaking news from yesterday. And then lastly, obviously, we've worked incredibly closely. And again, I think this is one of the best representations that I can think of, of collaboration between local government, the county, and, and developers on planning. And, you know, land use is the farm market, the farm women's market. And that has been an incredible partnership, where we've been able to bring back a really significant amount of money from the state, particularly for the parks, to be able to underground the parking lots, create those parks, which I think is going to be such an incredible gem, not only for the town, but for the broader Bethesda and sort of down county community. And I'm really excited to be able to utilize it. So again, I know there's a lot of other stuff I probably didn't touch on. I don't know if there's time for questions. I'm happy to take them if there are. The end of session letter has much broader topics covered, you know, all of the sort of big policy issues that we touched on in Annapolis, energy, healthcare. So happy to obviously follow up on that as well, but wanted to keep it a little bit.
Certainly. If there are some questions of you, Jared, by all means, if anyone wishes to ask a question.
Yeah, in the back. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, that was, it was disappointing.
Jared, could you please repeat the question? Thank you.
The question was, and this is why I love, I love our constituents, because I figured somebody would ask about it. So we got the, the tough news today that Moody's of the three credit rating agencies, Moody's officially announced that they are downgrading the Maryland state credit rating from AAA to AA+, which is the next level down. So still quite good. There's only, there's now only 12 states in the country that have a AAA bond rating, and we are now one of 14 states that have the AA+. So I mean, again, I don't think it was really all that unexpected. It was disappointing. So recently, Moody's downgraded the District of Columbia's bond rating from AAA to AA+. Again, citing the fact that, you know, there is incredible uncertainty and, and, you know, for good or for bad, we are sort of a company town, right? Maryland relies heavily on federal investments. That's really, I mean, that's, that's in normal circumstances, that's a good thing, right? Like, we attract companies, we attract some of the most brilliant people in the world because we have the FDA, we have the NIH, you know, we have NOAA, you know, we have the, the Space Center in Prince George's County. We're in a little bit of an unusual, I want to say not normal time. You know, whoever thought that we would be, I mean, the NIH has been such a bipartisan priority. I used to work on Capitol Hill. I mean, it's been a bipartisan, bipartisan priority for decades. I think most people would look at you like you were crazy if you said we were going to cut $20 billion and lay off, you know, thousands of workers for something that is why we lead the world in medical research. So Moody's said, you know, because of the uncertainty, particularly with federal workforce, we, we have concerns over Maryland's, we, they, they said they felt like the state, we did an excellent job of getting our fiscal health in order. And that was a huge priority for us this session. Frankly, it was a huge priority particularly for the House last year. So, you know, I will tell you, we faced a $600 million additional write-down while we were in session because of the Trump administration. You know, regardless of how you view his policies, from the, from just dollars and cents for the state, we saw a $600 million cut. Obviously, we don't know what actions Congress is going to take. You know, the proposals working their way through the House of Representatives on SNAP would shift a significant chunk of funding requirements onto the state. The Medicaid changes would potentially cost the state a million, a billion to $2 billion. So, and we're not alone in that. That will be across the board. So it's not going to be a huge impact fiscally. And I think the hope is, you know, when things return to a little bit more normalcy, hopefully, or level out, we'll maybe hopefully see that go back. And we don't know obviously what the other two credit rating agencies are going to do. And, you know, frankly, it's a huge priority for us to, as much as we can, you know, start to diversify our economy so we are not as reliant on, on the federal government. And we have, we have really tried to shift particularly recently in the past year, a lot more of our investments into entrepreneurship. One of the few positives we are seeing is, we actually, I think, had the largest number of new business starts of almost any state in the country for, I believe, the first quarter of the year. So we're trying to find the silver linings in a somewhat dark cloud that's hovering over, over this region. Thank you for the question. Yeah, Deborah.
Yeah, I, Deborah, I have a concern about people who serve our community, who are immigrants. They have been here for, for years, and yet they don't have documentation. The way I see it, no people being, there's no people.
Yeah.
We have people who do home renovations for our residents. We have people who do yard work and serve us in other ways. And to me, they're, they're part of our community. There, there's this, there's the federal government, and there's this thing.
Yeah.
And I just want to get some of your ideas on what we do at the state level, what if anything, can we do at the state level to get some level of protection.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate the question. And I mean, I'll say from the, I'll say from the start, obviously, you know, immigration policy is a federal, a federal purview. I used to work on the, on the issue when I worked on Capitol Hill. And so I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, I think you'd be hard pressed to find anybody on either side of the aisle who would tell you that our immigration system is working. And it's been disappointing, I think, for years that we have seen multiple bipartisan proposals, one, you know, just last year, that would have created pathways to citizenship, certainly would have settled the issue for, for dreamers, you know, children who come here or undocumented individuals who come here as young children. And obviously, absent action at the federal level, we are sort of stuck holding the bag. And we have really tried to do what we can in Maryland to make the situation a little bit better, a little bit easier. It's been a big priority for me. We had a whole package of bills this year, actually, one of, two of which I was, I was co-lead or the leader on. I had a bill that was just signed a few weeks ago into law by the governor to update the U visa program. So the U visa exists for undocumented individuals who are victims of crime and are working with law enforcement. So it is a huge, again, bipartisan priority is a huge tool for law enforcement to have undocumented individuals working with them to solve crimes. It makes, at fundamental level, it makes our community safer. And essentially, what happens is the local law enforcement certifies that somebody is being helpful, that they are working with them to, to solve the crime. And that information is then shared with the Department of Homeland Security, and you get a, essentially a temporary protected status that you can remain in the country. And so we updated the U visa timeline for, for law enforcement agencies in the state of Maryland. We clarified some of the ambiguities in there. We made the process a little bit easier. And I worked with a colleague in Baltimore City who's a former state's attorney or deputy, excuse me, deputy attorney general, who, who was a real wonderful partner on that. We got that passed into law. Another bill that I worked on with another Montgomery County delegate, Janelle Wilkins, was around sensitive locations, which we know has been sort of a guiding doctrine for the Department, the Department of Homeland Security for the most part, where they say, you know, we're not going to do immigration. where they say, you know, we're not going to do immigration enforcement at schools. We're not going to do it at hospitals or, you know, churches or houses of worship, right? We're, we're not going to do it in places where frankly, somebody should feel safe going to a hospital if they need medical attention. That was then thrown out under under the current administration early on in this year. And so while you can't necessarily, we can't prevent ICE, if ICE wants to go into a school, we can't stop them. We can't throw state or local law enforcement in their way, but what we can do is make it clear that every public agency understands what is legally allowed and what is not, that there are private areas where even ICE cannot go in without a judicial warrant. They can't go in with an administrative warrant, which is typically what they have to enforce immigration issues. And so we passed legislation essentially requiring the attorney general to make guidance readily available, make sure that all of our state agencies understand what is and what is not allowed. We had another bill to protect the state data systems to make sure that they are not shared for immigration purposes. You know, a number of years ago, we allowed undocumented individuals to get driver's licenses in the state to make sure that people were properly licensed and, you know, we're we're following the law when it comes to to operating a vehicle. And that's something that, again, states across the country, red, blue, and everything in between have done. You know, but again, we are hamstrung at at the state level as to, you know, providing a legal pathway for folks. And I think we would be much better off as a community, frankly, as a country, I think, if we provided a pathway to citizenship for folks who were who are here and contributing our community. But we are limited at the state level, obviously, in what we can do. Maybe time for one more, if there is.
Guess we're okay. All right. Jared, thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you for the invitation.
And again, thank you for everything you do for us.
And Tamara and Carlo, the citations are on their way. We're not able to get them for tonight, unfortunately.
Thank you, Jared.
That's a lot of very helpful information. He does a great job. Next order of business for us is the financial report. And notwithstanding Carl having just become to our treasurer, we figured after about, well, 20 minutes of being treasurer, we should still ask Rich to report on the past month.
Well, since it was April, I was still treasurer.
You're still treasurer for the month of April, quite right.
We've, we're a little more than 80% through the fiscal year. We've received about 72% of our operating revenue and we've spent about 78% of our operating expenditure. The reason for the the 72% operating revenue is, as you recall, we get, we get revenue from the state periodically. We just haven't received the last couple of trenches yet of of their funding. So we fully expect to get it. There's not a problem there. A couple of interesting things to note, they're not big, big dollar items, but if you looked at the report, there were a couple of items that were significantly over budget. One of them was the, our utilities, and I didn't know this until until we got, we got the bills for it, but we get, we every so often have to replace and get new meters to put on the water hydrants that we use in the town to do all of our watering. And so we have to replace those. And so that was the reason for the over expenditure there. We just didn't anticipate it. The other thing is we got, we've spent a little bit more on our street signs and lights. As you know, we've been putting in the LED stop signs and they're they're more expensive than than a regular stop sign by far. And so that's, that's the reason why that's over budget. But it's, it's pretty much leveled off now. So we're not going to see any more of those big expenditures. Those are just a couple of other items that were interesting.
Thank you. Are any comments or questions from my colleagues? Okay, thank you very much for the report, Rich. Now you're off duty.
Yes.
Our next order of business is the town manager's report. Todd, please go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks. I'll just highlight some key initiatives that have been undertaken by staff over the last month. We have been intimately involved in managing the 2025 council election. Congratulations to Carlo and Tamara. We published the election issue of the forecast newsletter, organized the candidates forum, and we certified the election results today. We organized and attended the annual meeting, finalized the FY26 budget and accompanying narrative, which is posted on the website. I certified property tax rates to the county and the constant yield tax rate to the state. Staff also executed Corso's, Corso is the developer of 7100 Connecticut Avenue, the former 4-H property. They're developing it with senior living facility. We executed Corso's Declaration of Covenants, a lease agreement for a town garage and a construction management agreement that outlines all of the requirements that we will place on on Corso as they construct the facility with respect to noise, lighting, hours of of construction, dust control, all of those. And that is also posted on the town website. The Declaration of Covenants was actually recorded in Land Records today. So that has been done by our attorney, Rob Bolt, and shared with with Corso. The staff reviewed the 90% design plans for the Capitol Crescent Surface Trail Phase Two, which effectively goes from the northern end of Elm Street Park out to Wisconsin Avenue. It's a surface trail, since the county didn't fund the the tunnel under Wisconsin. We have reviewed those. We've provided feedback. The intent is to have the, a representative from Montgomery County Department of Transportation and their engineer of record attend the June council meeting, either in advance of it at 6:30, for example, or during it to brief the council on 90% design plans, which won't change much once they become final. And we've completed also the negotiation of the memorandum of understanding for the county's use of the town right of way, which they'll need in order to construct the surface trail Phase Two. That will also be presented to the council at the June meeting and in coordination with the briefing by the county and their engineer. The staff researched speed camera authority, the newly provided speed camera authority that the state has granted, as well as implementation issues, which will be discussed later this evening. We completed finally, Sumerian Park renovations. We organized and assisted with the Scott Foster Path dedication. We also coordinated, continued coordination with WSSC on Leland Street drainage improvements. In short, there are some conflicts, some serious conflicts with WSSC assets underground for the extension of a storm drain down Leland. And we are likely to abandon that project because of these conflicts. Alternatives would require removal of mature canopy trees, some pretty major disruption of 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 private improvements in the, and as as well as the town right of way. And some substantial costs if if we get into relocation of WSSC assets to accommodate the storm drain. It was a a project that we had contemplated initially under to for you, for use of ARPA funds. And, you know, now that, and once the state, excuse me, once the Fed agreed to allow municipalities to take the standard allowance for the provision of government services, and the council agreed to do that, we didn't have that need to identify special projects per se that would be funded with ARPA funds. It was, it would be a nice to have improvement, not a critical improvement. But given the complications we've had with WSSC for better part of a year, it it looks like we might abandon that project because the alternatives to what WSSC will not allow are extremely disruptive and costly. But we will continue to keep you apprised of that, of any potential progress on that front. The staff continued review of potential improvements to Ridge Street and West Avenue. We reviewed a proposed Climate and Environment Committee Resident Awareness Survey, which will be discussed later this evening. We continued review of of LED streetlight conversion and tariff options. We prepared for the spring tree planting. The staff report says 138 public and private trees we planted. Actually, it's 139, which is close to our record for the town to a plant, to plant that many trees in one season. We organized and attended the spring trash and treasures, and we provided project support to town committees. And that concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Todd. Are there any questions from my colleagues about that? I had a couple, Todd. First of all, the, when will they begin the construction work on the Capitol Crescent Trail at Elm Street Park?
The latest news was this summer, probably late summer, or it may extend into fall. They are looking at the latest news on on the plans for that is that they've identified the ability to move the utility poles from the east side of 47th to the west side of 47th. And they've run it through the Parks Department. The Parks Department is enthusiastically supportive of that. Pepco is is preparing some design plans now. And so that, that development may in fact cause it to push into fall. But they said late, late summer or early fall.
Okay, because we are, we have been told that they, the Purple Line will be able to turn over the Capitol Crescent Trail to the county and be opened in the spring of 2026. So obviously, we'd want to make sure this work is done prior to that. And also, would this be dovetailed with the rebuilding of the playground in Elm Street Park? Because the two projects are very close to each other.
You know, I don't know if it'll dovetail exactly with it because the timing, I don't think they've even, I I don't believe the plans for Elm Street Park Playground are even fully, fully vetted yet. So I doubt that that will occur simultaneously. That will occur following the development and construction of CCSD Phase Two.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on. Our next item is the National Gun Violence Awareness Day Proclamation. Irene, let me turn this over to you to bring up and discuss with us.
Thank you, thank you. So unfortunately, we live at a time when gun violence is quite prevalent. Our, our community is quite safe, but there have been some incidents, certainly in the local high school over the last year. And over the last few years, the town has signed on to a proclamation in honor of a specific awareness day which occurs in the first Friday in June. If I may, I'd like to read the proclamation and we can discuss from there. This proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the town of Chevy Chase to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and to declare that we as a country must do more to end this public health crisis. Whereas every day, 125 people in the United States are killed by gun violence and more than 260 are shot and wounded, with an average of more than 19,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas people in the United States are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high income countries. And whereas Maryland has 805 gun deaths every year with a rate of 13.4 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state $10.5 billion each year, of which 389, excuse me, $383.9 million is paid by taxpayers and causing Maryland to have the 35th highest rate of gun deaths in the United States. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever, as we see gun violence continue to impact communities across the country. And whereas in 2013, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15, and a group of Hadiya's friends asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange on her birthday, the first Friday in June, a color they chose because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods. And whereas to recognize the 28th birthday of Hadiya Pendleton on June 6th, 2025, the first Friday in June, people across the United States will recognize the 11th Annual National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadiya Pendleton and other victims of gun violence, as well as the loved ones of those victims. And whereas by wearing orange on June 6th, 2025, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the hands of people who should not have access to them and to encourage people responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and communities safe. Now therefore it be resolved that the town of Chevy Chase declares June 6th, 2025, the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the town of Chevy Chase to support efforts to prevent the tragic effect of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Traditionally, we in the town have an event tied to this type of proclamation and was kind of unable to, at this point, tie it in with with June. That's something that's still under discussion. However, there is going to be an event that that I, if if this were to pass as a proclamation, that does occur on the day in Germantown, that will be a day of commemoration for victims and survivors, kind of connecting with other resources within Montgomery County in the state of Maryland that are working towards these efforts. And in addition to that, we're trying to look for something in the, in the fall to be in the town. I'm hoping personally that it's something around child safety, if if living in a home that where there is a gun present. So that's what I had. I like to put that forth for discussion.
Any discussion for us before we, okay. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We were happy to support this proclamation. Thank you, Irene. And I do look forward to having an event in the town in the fall. That's important for us. Thank you. Okay, at this point, we will now open up the floor to public comments. We would like to have anybody who wishes to speak on any issue. Come, but please come to the podium, please, and and say what you'd like to say and announce your name and address. Anybody who should speak? Deborah?
I'm Deborah Vol, excuse me, Deborah Volmer. I live at 7202 44th Street. And I have previously addressed this council on a few occasions about the issue I'm going to raise again now. Tonight, I have a particular ask of the council. But before I do that, I want to recognize Wicca Davidson, who has moderated tirelessly. And despite our differences, I want to give her credit for the hard work she does to keep the listserv going. With that in mind, I am inviting you, Wicca, to settle this dispute with me and to answer my emails, to talk to me on the phone or to meet with me in person. Now, assuming you're not going to be willing to do that, and I don't like to.
Deborah, excuse me to interrupt. It's appropriate for you to raise a comment to us.
All right, well, I'll get to that then.
Dialogue between you and a member of the town.
Okay, all right. But, okay, here's the thing. I wanted to open with that, but I do have a request of the council. I know that there is an honest debate as to whether a link from the town website and the town crier to the town neighbors listserv is in fact an endorsement. I contend that it is because of all the other organizations it could be linked to. I I say two routinely on the town crier. There's a link to Town Neighbors and there's a link to Chevy Chase at home. Now, I'm a member of Chevy Chase at home. I have no problems. The problem with Town Neighbors, and I have gone on at length in different meetings before this council, so you know my grievance. I am currently banned forever, I am told, from posting messages on the listserv because I refuse to take as an answer that I should not have a message posted on a subject that was being discussed on the listserv and I was reporting a new incident. It wasn't repetitive. I mean, this is a silly kind of thing to result in this, but in fact, I'm being isolated. If I somebody posted on the listener if they wanted to borrow a walker, I couldn't, I could lend them a walker. I I could post, I could communicate with this person individually. But if I were the person in need of the walker or something else from my neighbors, I cannot post. There's, there's a basic unfairness in this. Now, my, my request is this, not that we take this up and resolve this tonight because I know we've got new council members, we've got a lot on the agenda. And I, I don't, I don't, you know, I don't take what I'm asking lightly because the assumption is this is a private listserv, not a, not a function of the town. because the assumption is this is a private listserv, not a not a function of the town. However, there is an endorsement. There's no font, there are no funds provided by the town council for the listserv. But there is this endorsement. And I would like to see on the next regularly scheduled meeting of this town council, a discussion, the way the way there are discussions, there's constantly, there are discussions of various issues of concern to the town. They don't always result in a vote of any kind, but there is an open public discussion. I want the relationship, the discussion topic to be the relationship between the town government and town neighbors. And again, I say there's an endorsement there. And if if the moderator cannot be fair to all listserv members with respect to posting privileges, then I think the town has no business endorsing the listserv in any way. So I'm not saying make a decision tonight. I'm saying, let's when sometime when there's more time, let's put it on the agenda for a discussion, publicize it so people know that it's happening. And let's have a discussion among the council members as to whether the practice of linking to town neighbors from the town website and the town crier is a practice that should continue. So with that, I'll I'll conclude. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak at this time? My go ahead first, and then and then Donald after you, but he had already stood up. So.
Hi, it's Edmund Crowley. I live on Bradley Lane. I want to bring up the issue of particularly pedestrian safety on Bradley Lane. So I think as a lot of you know, just recently, there were two like pretty horrific crashes on Bradley Lane. And but I guess for those of us who live on Bradley Lane, it's not that much of a surprise. I mean, we, you know, we we go out there every day. I walk my my three girls to Chevy Chase Elementary School every morning. And it's it's just terrifying. And I'm kind of there waving the cars down to to slow them down. So I know I know that I know this is kind of a priority for you. I just, and I just really want to emphasize that it really needs to be our priority. It's 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 a really dangerous situation right now. And and, you know, it needs to be addressed urgently. And so I know within the town, we have maybe the authority now to put our own speed camera, particularly on on the westbound side. And also that, you know, we can engage with with the state highway authority on other measures. So I just want to, I'm sorry, this is, this is, you know, for a lot of us who live on Bradley Lane, this is a super, super important issue. And yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Donald?
My name is Donald Farren. I'm a resident of of Bradley Lane. And and I have a few things I want to comment on the situation with with Bradley Lane. I want to start out by complimenting Howard Berkoff, who was the Chair of the Public Services Committee on his leadership in dealing with problems of of Bradley Lane. And I'm very happy that that the the town council is also working on on those issues. I understand that at this point, the issue is couched as safety concerns on Bradley Lane. My concern is includes that, of course, but also somewhat, in fact, more broadly than just the safety concerns. The, let's see, last December, Howard Berkoff organized a exchange of opinions on the part of residents of Bradley Lane on the idea which has come up before. And then, at that point, it was a live issue again, proposals to widen the intersections of Bradley Lane, the intersections at Connecticut and Wisconsin avenues. The To summarize the comments of in opinions of the residents of Bradley Lane, it was 100% against widening the intersections. The reason being that although it seems like an obvious solution to the traffic on Bradley Lane, to widen the intersections to allow more more traffic to pass through there or more efficient efficiently, the results shown by studies, many studies, and I can cite those studies and and experts who who have worked on on the problem, the the result is maybe temporarily, traffic will move more smoothly. But very soon, the result is that more traffic appears. And so the term for that, that I think is induced traffic. So you're back with the same same problem, only only worse. And I I want, I don't know what representations the the Public Services Committee made to the town council, whether that point was made. So I'm making it now. And of course, we have two new members of the of the town council who did to need need to know about that. Okay, that's that's that. Then I have a really a question about a message that Barney sent to residents of Bradley Lane. Thank you very much for doing that. Barney alerting us to the agenda of this meeting. At one point in Barney's message, he says, Mayor Lane, then Mayor Lane, has reached out to the State Highway Administration requesting meeting for the town to review the Bradley Lane safety issues and the various ideas that have been proposed to calm traffic and make roads safer. As a resident of Bradley Lane, and I'm sure this this concern is shared by other residents, we'd like to know what are those issues that the time town will take up with the state highway administration? So is there going to be a mechanism for residents to express their views on those issues before the meeting?
Let me suggest this. Why was that question? There may be other people who want to speak tonight on Bradley Lane. And then let me respond generally to, okay, at that time, but I'll park you, I'll answer your question at that time.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? Sure, please.
Hi, I'm Gerald Marko. I live on Bradley Lane as well. On the same topic, I just wanted to extend a bit more. So many of you saw probably in the email chain, including you, Barney, thanks for acknowledging the email that my wife sent yesterday. And so we've been in in Bradley Lane for the past year. So it's about a year now, like little in May. And we have a two year soul. So we moved to this area for one reason, safety. We were in DC for 10 years. We liked it there. But as we had a child, we thought we need a different place where to live. And since we've been there, we basically love walking. We go to daycare here on the wonders. And we go up and down the sidewalk like multiple times a day, going to a brochure store. And same concern as many of the people that are here today, safety. So we were using our bike trailer the first few days to bike to daycare. And then we noticed that cars are speeding like there is no tomorrow. And we have dropped that option. So we're now like, just strolling again. And but still, like, as we walk there with our daughter and our dog, we're just like afraid. So that's to not just go too much in details. I guess we expressed a lot of ideas and thoughts what we have through the email. And I'll just conclude it here.
Thank you very much. Yes, please.
Good afternoon, Carlos Mojica, 4403 Bradley. Just want to support the feeling from my fellow neighbors about the fear of walking on Bradley Lane. We moved here about four years ago, and we felt it from the very beginning. But I think with the crashes this week, the fear is not only about walking, but with one of these cars and in my living room. So I think there are things that we can do. We have the new speed camera authority, and there are things that we hope that the state can help us do. And what I want to transmit here with to you as our representatives to these discussions with the state is, let's do something. Let's try to get them engaged. Let's try to get them to understand, get them to walk that street in the morning. I sometimes have to walk my dogs, have to go with my daughter, and it doesn't feel good. Okay. One thing about the the speed program that comes to mind is not to think about it as a revenue collection program, because that's the wrong way to think about it. The best speed camera program is the one that doesn't collect anything because everybody is under the speed limit. Okay. So just wanted to leave you at. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else? Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Anne Press, and I live at 4405 Bradley Lane. I grew up on Brookville Road in 2000, well, from 1967 until 2003, when my parents moved away. That was a road that was like Bradley Lane narrow and people zooming down that road all the time because it's a thoroughfare, since it's parallel to Connecticut Avenue. And this is the thoroughfare for East West Highway. And they did put up stop signs, and that did make a difference. And in order to ensure that that the rules were implemented, cops sat there for a long time, that giving tickets to people who were not not abiding by that. But I wanted to let you all know that most of you don't know that there was another very bad accident on Bradley Lane about four or five years ago, 1:00 in the morning, crashed, boom, the power goes out at our house and right in front of my house and Jane's house, a car had hit. It was coming from Wisconsin Avenue, and it hit the telephone pole, broke the telephone pole. And there was one person in the car. There was no other car involved. It was one person. The speeding on Bradley Lane has gotten worse and worse, particularly during the evening. And we've lived there 17 years. So we're very aware of it. And Jane, you've probably lived there the longest out of anybody. What, 40 years, 45 years, 50 years now? So I just, I just like people to be aware that that there are other horrible accidents. And then when there is an accident, not only, you know, you've got children who can be walking down the street, the two accidents that we just had were in the middle of the day, when there could have been children walking down the street. And I just wish that something could be done because it is getting worse and worse.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Charlene Gorman. I live on the corner of East and Bradley, so 6700 East Avenue. We've been there about nine years. I have witnessed cars going over 60 miles per hour, like zooming. And I think recently, there were three accidents, because there was one a few days ago. I think wasn't there three accidents in a row in the last two weeks? Oh, it was a tree. Okay, okay. What really terrifies me is the cars are hitting telephone poles or trees. I'm afraid it's going to go into somebody's house. I mean, they could literally run off the road. They could go into our fence on the corner. And if that the car doesn't stop, it could go into our house. That's a concern for me. I agree with everybody else about concern of children walking and people walking. But to me, my fear is the car running into someone's house. Something has to be done. I mean, we've lived there nine years, and the traffic only gets worse. And it's not going to get any better. So hopefully, we can.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else? Anybody on the screen? Oh, I'm No, you do need to go up there so that other people can hear you.
We've been living on Bradley Lane for, I'm your Friedman, 4207 Bradley Lane. And we've lived on Bradley Lane for over 30 years, 33 years. And we've been through this discussion almost every few years when there's some kind of tragic accident or potential tragic accident. It seems like we're talking on death to deaf ears. The state highway administration doesn't seem to care or do anything about it. I don't think we've been forceful enough. And I think there's got to be a solution beyond just meeting with them, but coming up with a plan that really slows traffic down. I think stop signs, like on Brookville Road, would make all the difference in the world. I think we need to consider speed humps if that helps us. But we just got it. We have to do something about it because once a tragedy happens, it's going to be unforgivable. And hope we do finally do something about it. For 33 years, we haven't done anything. So.
Thank you. Anybody else in this room? Yes, please.
I'm Michelle Schu at 4303 Bradley Lane. So I've been there for 25 years and agree it's definitely just gotten worse. And I've been, you know, commuting since I've lived here, I've been commuting, taking the metro, walking the sidewalk. And I've always, you know, you're a little nervous. But during rush hour, you think it's okay. But what's what was so concerning about this, these recent accidents is they were right around rush hour time. You know, one was at 5 o'clock, I think the other was at 7. So just that the fact that these cars can just so quickly just, you know, yeah, come up the sidewalk, hit somebody if there was a pedestrian, or, you know, into into our houses. I had the same concern, too. And then the other thing, I was also on that that call in December about widening, because I was very concerned when I saw the the email that said, oh, you know, someone's proposing that we widen Bradley Lane. So I thought it was the county or state or something. So I, I wanted to find out what was going on. And I was very disappointed when I was part of the conversation, I think when our neighbors kind of drew out that it was other towns, people in the town who were concerned about the traffic, you know, not being able to get into the town because of all the backup. And and that was upsetting, you know, because as Bradley Lane resident, we've taken the heat of the traffic, because we have all these rules about not being able to to use the town as a cut through, right? That you can't turn in, you know, no turn at certain hours. And so Bradley Lane, just like East West, we were take take on that traffic. So I really don't see that widening, you know, is a solution for, you know, for the reasons that you raised. But also, I think it also just, you know, wouldn't help with the speed, you know, kind of would just, you know, increase if there's no, if there's no track, people are just going to speed even more. So I think that's another concern. I just don't think widening is an answer to this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody participating in my video? Oh, I see, Grant, you have your hand raised. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I think George does as well, Barney. I think George may have been there before me.
Ah, okay, George, please, go ahead.
My name is George Rowland.
I'm sorry, George, it's very hard to hear you. Step back.
Can you guys hear me better now?
It's a little better.
I'm sorry. My name is George Rowland. I live on 4425 Bradley Lane. I lived with my partner in this house for nine years. And just wanted to express the same, the same safety concerns that other residents on Bradley have. But this time, we were actually also part of one of the terrible accidents. My partner was coming from work on Bradley Lane, who was two blocks from the house, and he was almost killed by this by this guy who was speeding. He, you know, he, the speeding car actually passed him on the right by going onto the sidewalk. If somebody had been walking there, that person would have been killed. And he side swiped the car and, you know, the rest, you can read from the police reports. But certainly, two things from there. One, we, you know, we live on Bradley Lane, we now don't really walk Bradley Lane anymore. But we do believe that hopefully, we can do something about the safety of the street. I do believe that speeding cars can easily kill somebody if they're trying to avoid another car or something. There is no room to maneuver. You either go left onto incoming traffic, or you go onto the sidewalk. So the safety concern, it's really, it's really important. And I appreciate you listening to this.
You're welcome. Thank you for your comments. Grant, your hand is also raised.
Yes, thanks, Barney. I mean, I'm, we've been talking about this for 41 years, as long as I've lived in this house. I'm at 4313 Bradley on the corner of East. And I've heard so many excuses from HSA, S H A. But when I've gone around the county and started to look at other state roads, like 28, for example, there are stop signs put up, and because of speeding traffic, and also cameras in various communities, if you go along there. So I actually, I really don't buy what they've been telling us that they're more concerned about just traffic flow, because I think they're not doing for us what they've done in other communities. I think the other thing is, it's gotten, I agree, it's gotten increasingly more dangerous. I mean, luckily, we have a driveway on East Avenue, and I can go in and out of the driveway on East. And using the driveway on, the circular driveway on Bradley is dangerous. I would say 50, maybe not 50, 25 to 30% of the time, when we're coming back with, if I'm driving back from Connecticut and want to go into the driveway, people will pass me on the left hand side, and at various increasing speeds. And I definitely agree. Well, we've got the data. We know that there's enough over 60 miles an hour. I mean, we've got enough data to prove the point. We've had the county collected it, the towns collected it. I just think it's time to do something. And I believe it goes back to our legislators who can put some pressure. If they're doing such a great job, they can put pressure on it, S H A, and on the governor, for that matter, because it's just getting more and more dangerous. And somebody is going to be killed. And to go to the earlier point, we've had people hit our corner multiple times off of Bradley. You go and look, you can look at the rocks of the corner, the rock face that goes down the side of East. It's, it's got so many cracks and repairs in it from over the years where cars have hit there. So I just encourage you, and I appreciate you really putting, doing something about it. Because certainly, many councils have done nothing.
Okay, thank you all very much for your comments. Let me just offer a quick general response to this.
Got something?
Hand wasn't raised, so I couldn't tell that.
I tried. I sent a text. My name is Mary.
I'm sorry, but during the meetings, we aren't looking at our phones. We're trying to focus on what we're hearing.
Oh, no, no, I chatted through Zoom. But at any rate, I live at 4409, and I just wanted to make one comment, or two comments, actually. One is that having a speed camera just at the Connecticut end of Bradley really won't be sufficient, because people speed in both directions. And it's crazy. I've been out there walking a dog in the evening, even with a flashing red light, trying to get people to slow down. And they just, the people, the people who are speeding on Bradley Lane do not care. They will pass you with an animal while you're trying to wave them to slow at 50 miles an hour at night. They just want to make the light. That's all they care about. And there are lights that people want to make at both ends, and that really contributes to the speeding. The other issue, so I really think we need speed bumps, or something that literally physically requires people in both directions to slow down. One of the things I don't understand is that if we had, if we had real speed cameras in both directions, that could be an incredible revenue stream. And I don't understand why no one is interested in capturing that that revenue stream. It would pay for itself many times over. Everyone is budget crunched, you know, go raise some money, you know, giving these people tickets. The other thing I wanted to mention is that the flashing yellow lights are are worse than helpful. They mentioned that this is residential area, and that you need to slow when the lights are flashing. But the lights don't flash in any way that makes sense in terms of what time of day it is. And instead, they give the impression that if the lights aren't flashing, you don't need to be concerned about the speed limit. And, you know, just go ahead and put the metal to the, you know, the pedal to the metal. So those were my two comments. It's, it is unbelievably dangerous out there. And the people who are speeding really do not care. And so you can't rely on their goodwill to the neighborhood at all to try to be responsible about not hitting people. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from participate, those participating in my video? Okay, thank you for that robust set of comments. Just to offer a quick response in general to those comments. The, first to your point, Donald, there's been a very robust email conversation, which I've been a part of because I've been the liaison to the Public Services Committee. So I have kept note of all those. And the issues that actually were listed in one of your emails, Edmund, where you put a synthesized all the various comments, and included the issues in this that, and the potential, potential solutions which have been listed, which included stop signs at Hillcrest, speed bumps, mini roundabouts, landscaping on the Chevy Chase Club side, making Bradley one way, requesting an engineering audit, safety audit on the part of the County Vision Zero Program, barriers to the sidewalk, and slowdown signs to report driver speeds in turn. So that's the list that I have so far. But let me say that Rich will now be the liaison to that committee. The committee has a meeting this coming Monday. So anybody interested in this issue is certainly welcome to join or participate in that meeting. If there are other ideas or other things you wish to cite, then by all means, we can take advantage of that and add those to the list. In terms of the prospect of meeting with the state, it looks likely that that meeting will be on the 30th of this month. So a meeting on the 18th will be timely for us to take any further input, and be able to represent that when we're at the table with the state. The, the other thing is generally to cite, and several of the commentators mentioned this, a lot of the ideas of what's necessary to to control speeding and for additional safety are completely in the domain of the State Highway Administration, and, and not something that the town can do on its own. An exception to that is speed cameras. And to your point, Mary Rayner, until this past session that's just concluded of the State Assembly, the town was, did not have the authority to put in a speed camera. Wasn't a question of an option that we hadn't pursued. We did not have the authority to do it. That has now changed, and we now have that authority, which is why later on tonight, we will be discussing that matter, and what the town needs to do to potentially take advantage of that authority, and actually install speed cameras on the north side of Bradley, which is the side, obviously, which you'd be most concerned about. That's where the homes are. So that is something new that we plan to discuss later on tonight. The other issues largely have to be taken up with the state, but we will. And we are doing this in conjunction with Delegate Solomon, precisely for the reason that others have cited here, which is that often on these issues, having the support and cooperation with the state delegation is a very powerful instrument in discussions with the S H A. So in any event, we look forward to any further ideas. The committee can take them down, and we'll take note of that. Rich and I will be participating in this meeting on the 30th with Delegate Solomon, and we'll certainly report back on that. The only other thing I will say, and this is just being realistic, we have always had experience with S H A that things take time. And as inexcusable as a delay may be, I'm just saying that it takes time to push, 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 push. We worked to get the stoplight on East West Highway at the foot of Maple for six years. But we got it. So we will work this as hard as we've worked any other issue. Guarantee that. Okay, anything else from my comments, colleagues? All right, thank you. All right. Moving on with our agenda, we now have some public hearings to take up. The first one is proposed speed bumps on Maple Avenue. And the information's been provided to the town. I'd like to know if there's anyone who would like to, Ron, is there anything else in preliminary that I have to say before introducing a public hearing?
No, no.
All right. I'd like to know if there is anyone who wishes to speak on that particular issue, which is placing two speed bumps on Maple Avenue on the block between Thor and Apple and Stanford.
Yes, sorry. Can you hear me?
Okay.
I apologize. I missed the the first meeting in which this was discussed. But, you know, had read the report.
Please introduce yourself and say where you live.
This Drew Davis. I live on Maple Avenue. I'm.
Did you quite catch that? Speak up, please.
Drew Davies. I live on Maple Avenue.
Well, which address on Maple?
7004 Maple Avenue.
Thank you.
In reading the letter that was sent, it discussed an engineer's report that had been initially reviewed and then changed after subsequent follow ups. I was just wondering if could get some context between the original decision and placement of the speed bumps, and then ultimately, what led to them being moved as it's laid out in this report.
Sure. Todd, do you want to speak to that?
Dave, can you speak to that, please?
Sure. So we got a petition to install speed humps. The town traffic engineer did an evaluation of the block and located, I guess, two potential locations for speed humps that were taken to public hearing in April. At that April meeting, and in advance of it, the council received some correspondence from one of the residents on the block, asking if there was an alternative location that was acceptable. They expressed some concerns about a parking space and some mobility issues that they were having. So the council at the April meeting asked the town traffic engineer to reevaluate the block and see if there was an alternative location that was acceptable. The traffic engineer did do that. And he finds that by moving the north hump north by 45 feet, it still meets the spacing and alignment requirements of our policy, and addresses the resident concerns that were expressed at the April public hearing.
Thank you.
And just to follow up on that, what was the, I guess, decision to have two as opposed to one on the street or on the block?
Yeah, generally, speed humps work better in a series. And there's spacing. So, you know, if there's one hump on a very long block, it's not as effective in reducing speed on the entire block as two humps that are spaced sort of equidistant between stop signs or stop signs and curves and roads. So it's just to maintain a consistent speed of travel along the block.
Thanks, Dave. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this topic? All right. Well, then let me open it up to the council for discussion. Any comments or views about the proposal? By the way, I should note that because I live on that block, I will be recusing myself from voting and discussing this topic.
I appreciate that Joe went back to Joe Kudrow, excuse me, our traffic engineer went back and took a look at some, an alternate location that would be for that other particular resident, given the the narrow width of their front, front lawn, I guess, that that there was an ability. And I also went out there and kind of did it, what does 45 feet look like? And it wasn't, it didn't seem too bad, if you will. So I also wanted to mention that because there's a curvature happening at the, if you will, as you travel south on Maple, that there will be some additional signage there, because that's also came out of discussion during the April portion of this public hearing. So I I'm in support of this, and feel that that will, you know, given the speed study that took place, it was justified to put the humps in. And I'm fine with the placement. The idea that that speed hump could be moved in a future date, I think, is impractical or unrealistic. But such as it is, appreciated the comment on that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Is there a motion then to approve the speed bumps?
I move to approve the speed dumps on 7, 6907,000 block of Maple Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I see four votes. And as in, I'm abstaining because I'm an interested party on that block. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our next public hearing on another potential issue regarding safety. That's been discussed at great length, first in the Public Services Committee, and then at the, our last town council meeting, has to do with improved safety on the hill in Stanford between Oak Ridge and, I'm sorry, between Oak and, and is Oak in East. The, what we are considering tonight is specifically a combined immediate improvement on the safety of that block, which includes a no parking zone. They'll be at the crest of the hill. They'll be 68 feet long, which will effectively widen that street and allow cars to pass without one car having to back up. And sometimes that has happened. But also to put in two speed bumps to basically further make the point that the 10 mile an hour speed limit is a serious matter on that hill. And with that, I'd like to open up the public hearing and know if there's anybody here who wishes to speak to that issue. No, no, but please, we would like to hear your voice. I would please go to the podium and speak up, please. We'd like to hear your voice.
That's usually a rarity. I'm a consultant. But no, we've, it has been getting worse and worse. And the backups, more and more, is people just get gridlocked and don't know how to use reverse gear in their cars also. So we're really happy that this is going through, because it's really become a big safety issue, as well as a big inconvenience. So I think everyone on Stanford, at least, is very happy to, you know, this is finally being achieved. Thank you.
What is your name, please? I didn't hear your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't say. I'm Robert Davidson at 4308 Stanford Street for 43 years now.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Yeah, Barney, there are some people who'd like to speak.
Oh, yes, indeed. Okay, the Robinsons, I think. Right, please.
Hi, it's Amanda and Michael Robinson. At the last meeting that we had with the committee, we were happy to make, you know, a concession to remove parking, you know, that we use, save for for one spot in front of our house. But it was really sort of predicated on a longer discussion about. predicated on a longer discussion about installing speed bumps, which are important to my family, including my three children. So I just thank you for your consideration. And Mike, do you have anything else to add?
No, no, we, just the speed bumps are just as important as the parking restrictions and we live at forty-three ten, so we're really across the street. And this is William C. Hi, this is Michaela. We all just want to say, my other one's climbing through the kids right now, but we just want to say thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, okay. Mike Sendal.
Yeah, just pigging back, you know, off of Bob and Mike and Amanda as well. I'm Mike Sendal over at forty-three twelve Stanford. The speed bumps are a welcome addition to the street. Anything to slow down traffic and be cognizant of just the environment around of what's going on. It's just looking forward to getting this done.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Paul Sa, forty-three oh nine Stanford. That, all these people, same house numbers on there. Would like to speak in support of the speed bumps, but also would ask that the town consider potentially additional measures. The first being that one of, in my opinion, at least, there's, one of the reasons for cars speeding along, especially coming from Maple, past Oak Ridge, up to the ridge on Stanford, is that the road apparently widens out because the intersection with Stanford and Oak Ridge is very broad. And it's been shown that the wider lanes encourage people to speed. And so it goes from an apparent width, I actually went down and measured of curb to curb at Maple, Stanford is twenty feet wide. The distance from the curb on the south side to the crosswalk line at going across Oak Ridge becomes twenty-five feet and then narrows again to twenty-one feet up on Stanford again. And that broad opening, I think, encourages speeding. And so it asks that the town look at some measures to potentially slow cars down going through there. The other thing I would ask that the town considers that rather than, I have no objection at all, I know that walking my dog, I see cars speeding along on Maple and it's gotten, the problem's gotten worse over time. But to look at some sort of stimulation to see what spillover effects will happen once you put measures in place. So once we put speed humps on Stanford, traffic gets moved somewhere else. Some of it slows down, some of it squishes to other streets, some of it takes other routes. And is that going to cause problems elsewhere? And maybe we can get ahead of some of those problems. And I know that there's some of its commercial software that's quite expensive, but some of it's also open source and it's free. So perhaps the town should consider looking at something where we take a look beyond just a single immediate area. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Is there anybody else in the room or on the video who would wish to speak to this matter on safety on Stanford Hill? Okay, not seeing any, I will close the public hearing and turn to my colleagues for comment and discussion.
I'm just, I'm supportive of this and I just wanted to commend the neighbors who've come together and foregone parking in front of their homes. And it's not a very big street, I know there's parking restrictions around as well. So it's not often that you get residents who are willing to make that sacrifice. And I think in conjunction with the speed humps will reduce the traffic speed, improve visibility and make what is a challenging street much better than it is today.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just had a couple of clarification questions if you'll just make sure I understood what was discussed because it was, it was in there. So the no parking restriction would not be a twenty-four seven, it would be during a certain time of day, is that correct?
No, it'd be twenty-four seven.
It would be twenty-four.
There's no parking, full stop.
Okay, because based on the engineer's report, there seemed to be a line in there that, that it was going to be a certain time of day.
In the word, do you want to speak to this, Dave? I thought your note made it.
Yeah, there was some discussion at the Public Services Committee meeting about whether that should be a timed no parking restriction, but I think at the end of the meeting, the committee decided that because, you know, those head-on situations happen, you know, whether it's rush hour or not, or during daytime hours, that, you know, in the interest of safety, it was probably best to make it a no parking anytime. And if the residents found later that, you know, they needed to use those parking spaces, it's certainly easy enough to revisit, but.
And why was it that particular length versus what our traffic engineer had requested? Was there residents that were like, no, but I still need my parking? I'm just wondering because there was discussion in the memo about, I would have preferred it to be a longer, no parking.
Yeah, the original recommendation was a restriction, I think seventy-six feet in length. And what we landed on was sixty-eight feet. So the difference between those is about half a parking space, which turns into a full parking space. So the, so the shorter length is intended to solve the problem while also maintaining as much on-street parking as possible.
Okay, thank you.
While you're there. Can you tell me what the committee discussed about, because the traffic, our traffic engineer specifically recommends not having two, two humps, just having one speed hump. Yeah, so, and the P S C is recommending both speed humps. What's, was there a discussion about that?
There was a little bit of discussion about whether the humps are warranted. And the committee felt very strongly that because we have the ten mile an hour advisory signs, because the speeding is, you know, poses such an issue there that even though the speed study that we did, you know, doesn't meet the exact standard of the ordinance and, you know, the spacing on one of the humps is a little close to the intersection. They thought it was important to include the speed humps because of the unique characterization of the hill.
Yeah, I also note the traffic engineer is very concerned about over signage in that area. So, and the P S C did not make a recommendation about, about that. But I'm assuming at the staff, you'll take a look at the signage there to make sure we're not over signing.
Yeah, I mean, over signing isn't a safety issue, it's more of an aesthetic issue.
No, it is a safety issue. It distracts people from driving.
So yeah, I know that there's a current speed limit twenty mile an hour per sign that we're going to remove. We'll have to put in advisory signs for the speed humps. Plus, the no parking zone is going to have signs. And so probably we will maintain the hill blocks view signs, but if it becomes such that those signs are creating a problem, I guess those are the signs that would be.
Yeah, and I, and I did notice, he specifically spoke about the M U T C D standards, which are federal highway standards for spacings, that it's likely that those are not going to be able to be met. So I again caution and ask you to be very careful about the signage there so that we come as close to those standards as we can. It places the town in a liability situation if we, in the event that that's not adhered to, so.
Yeah, certainly with the humps, we're putting a lot into a small area.
Well, speaking of that, is there another part of the town that has speed humps as they approach a hill? Do we, do we have that situation occurring in another part of the town?
Not that I'm aware of, I mean, there's certainly speed humps on slopes, but not in a situation like this where there's a defined hill crest with a hump on each side.
With a kind of, you don't know what's happening on the other side there, okay. And the speed study did not justify, the results did not justify. Can you speak to the conditions of that speed study, meaning were there cars parked in front of that home or was it during? Because I'm trying to figure out if it's an apples and oranges situation where the speed study as it stands now does not justify the speed humps, but were the conditions where the speed study took place similar to what would be the conditions on the ground if there was this no parking zone?
Yeah, so we did a week-long study. The counter was placed sort of at the crest of the hill. The committee was primarily interested in traffic volume and direction, just to see if there was traffic primarily traveling in one direction or another, because some of the solutions to fix the problem had other alternatives. But as part of that review, you know, we got the speed data. So during the study, you know, the parking restriction was not in place. So there were cars parked there at certain times, but not all the time.
Not really sure what the conditions are.
Yeah, so by creating the no parking area, you know, it seems logical that the traffic patterns will change a little bit, you know, likely there will be a little bit more speeding or an increase in speed. Because, you know, you don't have those conflicts with oncoming cars, which is part of the reason why the residents felt so strongly that they wanted the speed humps to be included as a part of the project.
Okay.
Any other comments from my colleagues?
You know, I'm new to this and I don't really feel like I have complete understanding of, you know, the problem, though I will say I went to the, I did drive in this area today just to sort of see what it would be like. And, you know, I am concerned, I am concerned at the divergence from the recommendation of the consultants. I mean, to me, that gives me pause because, I mean, his findings or whatever advice is based on something. So it's sort of like raises, you know, I'm still trying to figure out why the difference, why the divergence. And it does seem like a short distance, you know, so having the two humps also raises concerns to me, that's all. But I mean, I'm new to this and I still am doing my homework.
I'm sorry, you feel you're doing your, your homework, okay.
Homework.
I have, I have a couple of comments, is there anything else anyone else wants to mention? A couple of comments, one about the topic and another about process. On the topic itself, and I speak as someone who uses, drives, because I live right around the corner, I go over that hill all the time, both sides. And I see it as probably the most dangerous section of road in the whole entire town. Leaving aside Bradley, which I, the special case in the sense of being at the border of the town, but inside the town proper, if you will, or inside, inside the town streets or internal to the town, this is the most dangerous spot. And, and I have seen so many times when cars practically have had head-on collisions, they can't back up, or they have, one has to back up because they can't pull to the side. There are plenty of streets in town which effectively are only one lane wide because of cars parked on both sides, but you have a long stretch where you can see ahead and one of the cars pulls over to a blank spot on the side and the other passes and it's all fine. But this hill is not that, it really is very dangerous. And, and the, so I think widening it at the top by taking away the parking is really terrific. I think that will be very helpful and I concur with Carlos' comment of thanks to the residents willing to do that. But I'm also very sensitive to the speed and, and I, and I, I am because the, it is, our policy is set up for the normal street in town where the speed limit is twenty miles an hour. And so it is true that the traffic test did not get to, based on twenty miles an hour, did not demonstrate the need for the traffic hump. But the fact is that we're recommending residents drive only ten miles an hour on this section. And it was very evident from the data that that is greatly exceeded, that the mean is like sixteen, seventeen, eighteen miles an hour and a lot of cars are going twenty, twenty-five miles an hour. So if I calibrate it not to the policy of twenty, but to the, what we want people to do, which is ten, it seems to me it's pretty materially exceeded. And as to the number of humps, I think the point is you're trying to slow down the traffic from both sides of the hill. And so, yes, the two humps would be close, but they would be achieving their goal of slowing traffic in both directions, which I think is what we want. So I'm, I'm completely comfortable with it and I respect the fact that residents are looking to see a combined solution that brings everything together. So that's my comment on the, on the, on the, on the substance. In terms of process, though, I am keenly aware that both you and Carlo have just joined. And, and I feel it is really fundamental that this council take up decisions when the council members feel that they have been able to fully ventilate, think through and really consider the matters carefully. These are important things and we want to do it right. And so I'm very comfortable in deferring a vote on this for another month. If you believe that you as a new member of the council would like to take the time to consider it further, I don't, I don't believe it's an important issue and I'm not suggesting we're not going to take it up. But I care very much that, that the council and every member of the council feel they've had the full time they need to, to consider the matter.
I defer to your, whether or not you want more time. But I, I think we can parse this a little bit. I think the no parking is kind of an issue that's not it. It's not an issue here, it's the speed bumps. So we could, as a process matter, go ahead and approve the no parking tonight and then let the new members take a look at the other issues of speed humps.
I would be, I'd be uncomfortable with that frankly. I would, I think, I think there's a strong sense of this being a combined set of measures and that's the way we see it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it any differently, I'm just saying you could do one of them now.
I'm not, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure there would be the support for doing one without doing both. So I think, I prefer to, I'd be more comfortable taking a vote if we defer, taking, deferring on both matters.
Let me, let me counter that. The recommendation of the traffic engineer was only no parking in a set, and he said at, at most, he would recommend one hump. And we're now recommending two. So I think the issue is the speed bumps. It's not the no, and I don't see why we would, why do we need to hesitate taking part of the measure considering the other part? It's still one of the same. But, but give, I mean, I, I don't, I think it's unfair to, to let these guys take a look at this and not know more about it.
There's no. Oh, excuse me. Sorry, they're raising their hands. I was also going to say that the implementation, there could be a vote, but the implementation of it could be some point later, if you will, you know what I mean?
Howard's here now, we can, Howard's here now and he's the chair of the P S C, so can you give us, Howard, would you talk to us a little bit about the discussion at the P S C on the recommendation of the traffic engineer and why you guys thought it should be implemented together and why there should be two speed humps rather than none as the engine.
Okay, right, thanks, Rich, thanks. Howard Burkhoff, Chair of the Public Service Committee. Thanks for the question, yeah, just to recap the conversation that we had, the Public Service Committee. We did have a very spirited, long engagement with residents multiple times, as I talked about last time. And I will say, we were struggling, right, because the Public Service Committee is really focused on the visibility issues. The residents raised the concern of the, the speed issue in that area. And so what became as we're, our goal, what we talked about was really kind of addressing two birds with one, you know, with one action, right? So acknowledging the speed concerns and acknowledging that there is a, you know, standard policy for speed hump, but in cases where it makes sense to, to work together, to work collaboratively, to solve two issues, the Public Service Committee came to a consensus that said, yes, with the graciousness of the, of the residents that agreed to give up parking spaces and we would package that in with a speed bump together, and we agreed to two speed bumps. Well, let me rephrase that, there was conversation about a third down the hill, but really the focus on Stanford Hill was really two speed bumps, one at either side. We recognized Joe's, Joe's comments about the, you know, policy and, and what standard, you know, distances, however, the P S C. However, um, the PSC really did come to a consensus and agreed that one on either side would be reasonable, right? Uh, given that approach, and I think there is a reasonable spot even on the side closest to, I think is it, it um, east, right? East, 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 closest to east. There seemed to be a, an ideal spot for that. So, so the answer fundamentally, yes, we did support a combined packaged approach with uh, it with two speed bumps and, and the giving up the parking spaces.
I read.
Oh, uh, the other thing that, that um, given the discussion that we just had about Maple or previously had where the speed bumps are right in front of like walkways and such, did that come up as a problem with anybody in terms of?
Not, not in our meetings, no.
From Maple's side, okay. Um, and then therefore the sight line issue that exists just because of the topography also is still going to be an issue. And everybody recognizes that you could still go over the hump and you know, speed over and not know what's going on on the other side still, like as long as it's not, it's like not solving the.
I, I, well, I, I, I mean, this, the, the intent of the bumps is to slow down the traffic, make it conform much closer to the 10 mile an hour speed limit that's been advised. Um, and it, I can't guarantee it's always going to achieve that goal, but it seems to us, seems to me that's going to help. Um, and and it is trying to correct the problem from both sides and hence two humps. Um, I have a lot of respect for, for Joe Cuthro and his views, but I think, you know, and and that's, but, but two comments, one is um, I think that as a practical matter in saying, let's wait and defer and then have another chest of speeding. I don't know why we would expect results to be materially different other than being faster than the, than the, the results that came from the study that was done in 2024. And I don't logically see why there'd be anything that would, the cars aren't going to slow down when they go over the hill. So I, I don't really see, to me, that there's much practical value in, in taking it into two steps like that. Um, and the other comment is, but this is just a matter of perspective and I'm just being candid about this, everybody. You know, hi- his job is to think solely about specifically what is good practice in respect to traffic. We also have a broader issue that include the concerns and feelings of neighbors and residents. Uh, and and clearly the joined up solution that brings both these together is for them a very important package. So that is a consideration that we would take on board that he explicitly says is not his concern. So he's not necessarily to be the person who will summarize all the different considerations that we, that we have to take into account in coming to our decision.
Yeah, let me be clear about something first. I, I support both, uh, the both the the no parking and the speed humps, but I want to give these guys the opportunity if they don't feel comfortable right now.
Exactly, that's my feeling. So I, I, if there's a feeling that you would like more time, please take it.
Yeah.
Just make one comment to um, Irene. The restriction of parking not only provides space to get by, but it also improves the visibility around the curve. So when you're coming up from, when you're heading east from east, because there aren't parked cars, parked cars right at the, at the curve, you have a line of sight that's improved over what's there today.
Yeah, good point.
And I'll just say, not to put time or response, because I was on the Public Services Committee. I'm very well versed in this topic, but I, if, if you want to take more time, we'll act on it next time.
Was there a discussion about putting up a, a speed board as well, given, given just the perceived speeding, but yet the speed study did not back up the perceived issue? I just was curious. The roving, the temporary roving um, speed board that we have, was there just?
Call Howard. It did come up, but I think people were talking very quickly.
No, I don't think so. Barney and I would. Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, Shamra, you wanted.
I just, I had one, go ahead, go ahead.
I was curious, you had mentioned the 10 mile an hour advisory speed. Is there a difference between that 10 mile an hour speed sign and like the 20 mile per hour speed signs?
Dave, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, um, yeah, since the, the town can't pass a speed limit lower than 20 miles an hour. However, there are circumstances traveling over speed humps, um, places where there's limited visibility that you can install advisory speed limit signs, uh, which are not enforceable. Uh, but they really adjust to give drivers an idea of appropriate speeds. Um, so because of the sight lines on that hill, um, and also there's one on Aspen Street where there's also a hill. Um, the town has posted Hill Blocks View signs with an advisory 10 mile an hour plates.
Yeah, I'm also rethinking the no parking thing first. And based on Carlos' comments about the line of sight, without the speed humps, what you're going to get is increased speeds. Because the, the line of sight is improved, now people are going to see that that's clear and they're going to go past it. So it's just another, and and a- as you know from past hearings on stuff like this, I, I really defer to the, to the committees of the town to have researched this and because they, they are able to balance those must do things that the, that our attorneys and the traffic engineers tell them versus what the residents are saying. So I, I, I really respect their opinion. So I'm, I'm, I'm all for putting both the no parking and the speed humps in. But again, I defer.
So, I mean, I appreciate the additional uh, discussion and clarifications on this issue and I don't think I need any more time.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion among our colleagues? All right. Is there a motion then to introduce regarding this?
Yeah, I move to approve the uh, installation of the, the no parking and speed humps on which street? Oh, on Stanford Street?
Okay, is there a second? A second?
May I add a little bit of an addendum? If we could get an updated speed study after everything, i- if it, if it is approved, um, can we have an updated speed study after everything is done? I am just thinking that this isn't the end.
Okay, but we have our own equipment, so we know we can do that quite easily now, right? Doesn't, it's not a big deal. So yes, we can add that.
Yeah.
And I think, um, I would also add that we would look to the staff to recommend the changes and signers that would be appropriate for the hill.
Absolutely.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right, passage unanimously. Great, thank you all very much. Good discussion. Okay, uh, third issue, um, a financial contribution to Rosemary Hills Elementary School. Uh, this is a proposal to, uh, for the town to provide a $10,000 grant outright and another $10,000 if matched by a further $10,000 by other parties. Uh, so that our total contribution would become 20,000 out of a total that we would have been involved in raising of 30,000 for what would be a $64,500 project to provide an outdoor classroom at Rosemary Hills, which of course serves the students, the elementary school students here in the town. Um, this proposal arose out of a, um, uh, a request that came last, uh, our last, I guess at the end of last year, right, that we took up only last month. But from uh, the, from the um, section three, which has put $13,500 toward this project. Uh, and a woman there is very involved in the fundraising for it and we thought it would be a good idea to consider it and therefore have a public hearing tonight and consider appropriating this money. Um, uh, since uh, it is, as, as, it's just to quickly provide this other bit of background. Um, we have a policy where uh, we do not make grants to organizations where we do not have a nexus with the town. Uh, so for example, we have helped out wonders, but we do not help out just charities anywhere, whatever, no matter how good they are, because there's no connection to the town. But in this case, there obviously is because students from our town go to the school. So it's a completely legitimate in the box consideration for us to take up. So with that, uh, this is a public hearing. Is there any comments from the public regarding this proposal? Deborah, please.
Uh, Deborah Volmer, 7202, 44th Street. I was here at the last um, uh, regular council meeting when the presentation was made in support, the explanation for this project and support. And I do think the idea of the outdoor classroom for these young students um, is, is a very um, desirable uh, project. And I'm all in favor of the town contributing to this endeavor and for, and in the amount that's been stated. So that's the extent of my comments.
Thank you, Deborah, appreciate it. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this? Okay, saying none, I'll close the public hearing. Um, comments or questions from my colleagues?
I had a, just a clarification, apologies, my, my memory isn't that great. If they're unable to raise the entirety of the funds, are they going to go forward with just a portion of the project?
That's a, it's a very good question and, and um, I think I recommend that if we approve this tonight, that our, that our contribution be contingent on finalization of a, of commitments from the other parties for the project. And I think we would leave room in that definition of the project to potentially cut it back if that's what it took to make ends meet with what they need to raise. But we'd want to review that, right? I mean, we, we don't want a situation where the project is cut back so much that we might not even think invaluable. Um, so I think that our resolution does have to be contingent on uh, that, that our money will go in when the necessary funds have been raised from other sources. Uh, and that we also approve a final plan for the project.
Yeah, I, 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 I did not. I don't, didn't recall it exactly like that in terms of what she said. It seemed to me like she was, when she presented it, if she didn't get enough money, they would phase it in. So they would do a portion of the project. And then depending upon how much money they raised, because if they didn't raise 64,000, they obviously couldn't complete the whole project. So I, I don't know how we word it, but um, it, it's very possible that she, they don't raise the 64,000 and they raise some, some number less than that. And we would still want to contribute and and they, and give them the opportunity to phase in their work, so.
I think that's legitimate. I just would like us to be able to review that so we're comfortable at the time that the town's paying the money. That's it. That's all.
So I, uh, I do support the idea of this um, outdoor classroom and, and the improvements. And I just share the um, you know, the, the desire to sort of have clair, clarity as to how it's going to be, um, you know, when the funds will be dispersed and you know, what the overall project would be in the end. So, I mean, would, would we ask them to explain the phases or explain the scaled back version? And I remember there was matching funds too, so I just wonder how that would work.
The matching funds, uh, we had not put any mechanism in place other than to say that the second 10,000 tranche from us would have to go, would only be forthcoming if matched by other parties. We hadn't defined which other parties or anything like that. We hadn't put any conditions on it. Um, the um, uh, I think in terms of, we hadn't really, we haven't really discussed exactly what other conditions in terms of approval, but I think that, that um, uh, and I don't think, and I think we should be flexible ourselves. So all I'm suggesting is that we would want to be able to review those plans and be comfortable with whatever that final plan of action is. So that if they came back and said ultimately, okay, we can put in something that's pretty good for $45,000 or $50,000, maybe that's fine and then the rest, something else we done in the future. But on the other hand, I think we ought to protect ourselves that if they did something that was really scaled back and you know, we didn't think it fully accomplished very much, we might go, wait a minute, you know, that, that just may not be enough. So I, I just feel that we, we should, again, I'm, I'm very much in favor of this. I think it's a great thing to do and great thing to encourage. And and further, I think it'd be good for this town to have, be helpful in the finance, in, in the fundraising, to be able to get the rest of the money. Irene has already spoken to section five, and we certainly here tonight, we ought to be speaking to Kensington. Uh, and, and, and obviously look to the PTAs to be very involved in this. So I think we should be all behind this and try to get to the total. Um, and not, not second guess or put in a lot of conditions, but I just think in general, we ought to be clear that our money goes in when a, uh, there's a, uh, the commitments are there for the rest of the funding or for the portion for what they would wish to go ahead with the first phase. If they cut it back.
So the matching would be pretend it, it passes tonight, so May 15th through uh, 2025 through, I don't know, end of the year, let's say December 21st, 31st, that is it time bound that way? Is it, or is it like you've already raised X amount, therefore we're?
I, we haven't thought about that. Is that something you'd like to propose?
Uh, I would, I also, the, is it other? It, does it matter if it's town residents or other municipalities that do their own thing? You know, I just, in general, I'm all for this, don't get me wrong. I just want to be somewhat uh, understanding so that if, if someone has a question about it, I have, I have something to say.
Yeah. You know, as we're talking about this, I, it, it occurs to me that we probably should say, ask them, you know, what would you do first? Give us kind of the chunk of work that you would do first. If in, in, you know, and what would you do second? What would you do third? And price them out for us so that we could, we could be comfortable saying, okay, our, we're comfortable in at least the fit first phase of this. If we raised, if we raised that much, we're in. So I, and, and she, you know, she did break it out for us. You know, there's part, they, she had part one was the teaching space was part two was the picnic area, part three was the planters and part four was a garden veg and drainage. And I think that probably is what is in, in her mind in terms of the stages of it, but I don't know that for sure. So maybe we should just go back and say, look, we're all in this for this, but you know, give us a sense of what, what you would do first and, and some amount around that so that we'd at least be comfortable knowing that our $10,000 if it goes, if we, it's going to go to that first phase, obviously, and.
Let, let me propose this if I might. Um, I think the consensus is we're all in favor.
Yep.
That's clear.
Absolutely.
Um, when we pass appropriations, usually we're quite specific. We don't have the language in front of us to do all these, so let's not try to do it on the fly. Uh, I'd be happy to get back to a report that the consensus is that we're in favor, that we look to take a final vote next month when we can do the further wordsmithing of the, of the appropriation. Uh, and, but want to check these things with her. And I think also consider some of the other points. I mean, for example, would we, would we want the matching to come from private source or other, other organizations, but not from other municipalities? In other words, we might want to say that we'd love Kensington to help out, but we're not going to count you as the matching gift against our 10,000. So there may be some things that we just want to think through a little more thoroughly uh, that I don't think we've had a chance to consider. So why don't we just leave it at that?
Yeah.
Um, and.
Including.
Including the potential phase, right, the scoping issues. Yes, I think that's a good point. Yep. Uh, because we do, we do want, we do want to do something that allows this to actually happen.
Yeah, right.
Uh, we really do. So I, I'd be happy to get back to her and communicate that. Okay, good, thank you. Um, with that, we're finished with the public hearing section and move on to the council discussions. Uh, the first item is the speed camera authority policy. Um, and uh, Dave, Todd, who will take us through this? Dave is pointing to the back of the room, which means you, Todd.
That's right, exactly. I'll take you through it, no problem. Uh, so the purpose of tonight's discussion is really to discuss the newfound authority we have from the state to deploy speed cameras. Uh, the, the, the council is asked to discuss how the town and if the town wants to exercise this authority. Uh, opportunities, issues, as Barney outlined in his email to Bradley Lane residents this evening. Process we would need be, need, that would need to be undertaken. The need for a town policy, timeline to accomplish the work so that a specific action can be taken. The purpose of tonight's discussion is not to determine and decide on specific locations for speed cameras and the timeline for that, but how we exercise this newfound authority and, and, and if we exercise it, what the process is to, to move forward. Uh, you've all received and reviewed my memo on this as well as Ron's uh, email with respect to the. email with respect to the process we need to follow. And so I will open up to general discussion about how we'd like to proceed. But from a procedural standpoint, I think it's important for the council to understand that we should establish the need and desire to operate a speed camera program on our own versus relying Montgomery County to do that. And once that interest and need is established, there will be a preliminary approval. I think we would need to seek from the S H A for any types of speed cameras we would want to initially deploy. So that we understand if there are restraints, constraints, objections to deployment. We would know them because that changes the whole tenor of the conversation around our speed camera program potentially. There would have to be a draft policy put in place to be considered with respect to where we deploy, how we deploy, the thresholds upon which we measure deployment, the locations of deployment, the fee schedules, the fine schedules, all of that needs to be determined as well. From a procedural standpoint as well, we would need to pass an ordinance authorizing the town to implement and operate a speed camera program, and that could be done in the future in in conjunction with a review of the policy that we have drafted and the council has approved for public hearing. Ultimately, then it will become a contract with a vendor determination of sites. We would have to likely, there would be a very long lead time with respect to the the acquisition of the equipment that we would like to use for for our speed camera program, which is a pole based LiDAR system, which is the 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 best technology out there and the most reliable technology that we would like to use. Unfortunately, there's a very significant lead time on the acquisition and procurement of that technology. So we would.
How much? How much lead time?
Six to seven months. So we're looking best case scenario. If the council establishes the need and desire to do this, passes an ordinance for the policy, which might take some time, we're looking at, you know, probably September. So we're looking at seven months past September, so March, April of next year is probably the soonest we will be able to stand up a program. Obviously with a contract with a vendor and 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 have the cameras operational. There are considerations of and and state law requirements regarding notification of a speed camera program. We have to post the speed camera locations. There are public notification requirements, and so best case scenario, we're looking at spring of next year. So I I don't want to reiterate everything that's in the memo that I sent to you or everything in the email that I sent that Ron's that I forwarded from Ron to you all today. But I think the discrete decision points tonight are is the town interested in standing up its own program or continuing to rely on Montgomery County to operate a speed camera program on state highways primarily at this in in this case, in pre case, primarily in state highways surrounding the town? Because ultimately, any decision that the council makes with respect to whether to stand up its own speak camera program will inherently need to address whether or not we want to install speed cameras on internal town streets. What we do in response to requests for speed cameras in internal town streets, or whether we're limiting the program to state highways surrounding the town on which we have the authority to deploy speed cameras with the approval of the S H A, only within the corporate boundaries of the town. So for a little for edification of the new council members, the town's corporate boundaries extend to the middle lines of our of the state highways, save for Wisconsin, because our corporate boundaries don't extend to Wisconsin. But the corporate boundaries of the town on the north, the east and the south extend to the middle lines of those state highways, East West Highway, Connecticut and Bradley. We have the ability to deploy speed cameras or the authority, the newfound authority from the state. Arguably, we already had the authority, but we couldn't find a police department who would be willing to to be the adjudicator of citations that might have been issued from speed cameras. But aside from that, and without the technicalities, our corporate boundaries extend to the middle lines of East West Highway, Connecticut and Bradley. So we have the authority to monitor westbound traffic on Bradley, southbound traffic on Connecticut, and eastbound traffic on East West Highway. We don't have the authority to to do the other directions. As you know, there's a speed portable camera unit, a P C U, that the county deployed on East West Highway. The county's policy currently is not to deploy static permanent speed cameras. They they install portable camera units, the housing units, and they use those to house cameras that they rotate among many locations. So I don't think anyone knows whether it's a camera in the P C U on East West Highway or not. But certainly it's a deterrent. There are no cameras on Southbound Connecticut. And as you know, there's one camera on the south side of Bradley monitoring speeds eastbound that the county deployed with the approval of the S H A. We could potentially deploy a camera on the north side of Bradley, or as Delegate Solomon suggested tonight, that I did that I wasn't aware of. Apparently, he's heard from the Montgomery County Police Department Automated Traffic Enforcement Unit that they're willing to deploy a or can deploy at least a camera that can measure speeds bidirectionally so that they can monitor and enforce speeds in both directions. But the other locations, logical locations, at least at this point, if the council wants to to focus on state highways where speeds are greatest potentially around the town. We have to determine whether we want to limit a program to those to those corridors or we open the program to all streets in town. But there is a logical progression of 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 decision points that need to be made. And the only purpose of this discussion is to say, is there a need, a desire to operate a speed camera program? And do you want to authorize the town staff to proceed in the additional steps needed to determine whether or not it's feasible or not? And obviously, Bradley is a it is is the impetus for our interest primarily in a speed camera program. So I would suggest that at at the minimum, if the council wishes to, they would say, yes, we we have desire to 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 further research a speed camera program. And we want staff to determine whether there's preliminary approval from the S H A for a speed camera on the north side of Bradley to monitor westbound speeds. We want the staff to draft a policy to be considered by the council for the deployment of speed cameras. With some direction, obviously, that we'll need to determine what content, you know, there will be with respect to that. And ultimately, there would be, after that discreet decision point, there would be the further actions of of an ordinance and a public hearing of the ordinance, as well as the policy. Ultimately, letting a contract with a vendor, procuring the equipment, installing it, meeting all the legal or regulatory requirements, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That's all outlined in the memo that I sent you, primarily not all of it, but most of it's outlined in the memo that I that's included as part of the council packet. And in the email that I forwarded to you from Ron this afternoon. So they haven't answered any questions. I hope that was understandable.
Yes, it certainly was. Thank you very much, Todd, for that. Let me open it up for discussion.
No, you can go first.
Thank you, Todd, for preparing this memo. It's extremely helpful. And I did appreciate the, if you will, looking at both sides of of the equation here. And I really appreciate you bringing up what Delegate Solomon had said, because that was a surprise to me as well. So if I understood correctly, somehow there's been communication to Delegate Solomon via the S H A in some capacity that on the south side of Bradley, they're willing to stand up a bidirectional speed camera. Is that what you heard as well? Is that what everyone heard?
Yeah, that's what I I believe. I don't know who Delegate Solomon.
The county, the county would put in the camera, but the S H A is giving permission.
Yeah, but that everything seemed to be moving forward in that.
I didn't, I didn't understand him saying that it would be a bidirectional camera. I think he just said there would be a camp, there.
Yeah, it was on a on a pole and.
It's a bi-directional.
So so ostensibly.
Be called DriveSafe. Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. There's a technology called DriveSafe that can be pole mounted, that can monitor speeds of traffic in both directions from one side of the road. So we we have been in multiple conversations with the vendor who who has a contract with Montgomery County, Chaby Chase Village, Gaithersburg, Rockville, everywhere in 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 Montgomery County. They they have a hold on on the contract in Montgomery County. They have a bidirectional monitoring system called DriveSafe. And apparently Delegate Solomon heard from someone yesterday, whether it be M C D O T or M C P D or or the S H A, which likely was the case because they sounded like the discussion yesterday he had was with S H A. And so they might have determined there is the capability of of deploying this bi-directional monitoring system. The technology is there. It's readily available. It can be done pretty quickly. That technology is actually available to deploy very quickly. The LiDAR system, the most reliable system that is most used in the county. There's a very large lead time in procurement of that because of major orders in the Middle East, believe it or not, where they need to meet those that high demand for these systems. And so that's why there's such a long procurement lead time. But Delegate Solomon clearly said they can monitor both directions of traffic with one system on the south side.
So ostensibly, as we've, Todd has just established, where it's going to take X number of months until A, there's a policy that's been reviewed and voted reviewed by residents, commented by residents and then voted on by the council. This can be kind of that first immediate step as we first, because it's it's still not affecting a town policy, but it allows for S H A to to do that. So is I would, I would, I don't know all the details about what Delegate Solomon said, but I would highly encourage before the meeting on the thirtieth to figure out if that's something that can be pursued quickly because it's basically switching out whatever the equipment is there right now. And and they're all issuing citations and all that stuff, right? While all these.
Housing unit right there on Bradley, on the south side of Bradley here again, it's a portable camera unit called a P C U. And and as you know, the county, as as I indicated before, and as as most of you know, that the the county doesn't deploy permanent cameras anymore. They deploy housing units in which cameras are rotated, so it's not a permanent one. But the average driver doesn't know that with, you know, the signage that's installed, and they don't know. If the housing unit's there, they don't know if the camera's in it or not. So they normally would heed the speed limits and and advisory signage and slow down, which probably on the eastbound Bradley, but not westbound Bradley, because there is no signage related to speed cameras on westbound Bradley.
So if this pole mounted cameras there, I guess it's a question of how long would it be temporarily there for? Like, can we get it for four, five, six months while we get all this other stuff figured out? So that's just a question.
Yeah, pole mounted, pole mounted systems usually are permanent. So it sounds like Delegate Solomon got some indication that a system, a permanent system could be deployed on the south side of Bradley to measure speeds in in both directions. It sounds to me as if these, because these pole mounted DriveSafe systems are 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 permanent. You don't take them on and off the pole. They're permanently mounted to the pole. Seems as if got some indication that they're willing to do that. So I can certainly follow up with him and Eden, his chief of staff tomorrow, to figure out who they spoke with and 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 what promises were were made, and not necessarily promises, but you know, what what was what was indicated could be done there.
In general, I am in support of the town, take, you know, taking on this authority. And just for clarification, it takes effect on October first. So whatever happens, let's say there's a speed shipment of equipment, we we can't do anything before October first. But I I am in support of kind of looking at this in in at there's there's greater road rage since COVID. I don't understand, begin to understand the whys behind it, but that's just the reality of the situation. And and we we should take advantage of of technology as as we have it. But there is a total cost of ownership, like there's, I understood here, there was the per camera per month cost, but it's also staff time to review all of the the potential citations that will be issued, the associated administrative effort to to, you know, send all that information out. If it's contested, that's yet more administrative support that's needed to to get it through. I think that's something that is, you know, just a cost of it. But I did want to relay that the cost noted here is not really the total cost. And I would be in full support of developing a policy such that, you know, there where we're where we're finding that there's some gross speeding going on. And but on the other hand, based on volume, based on, you know, true to studies there, much like we have for Speed Hunt policy and other other permitting parking restrictions, you know, so we we make it very, very clear what the bar is going to be. So that's all I have.
Yeah, I I I kind of see that there's a couple of critical points that we need to know before we establish our own policy. Number one is, is the camera on Bradley going to be installed by the by the county or the state, whoever's going to install it? And and that's one critical point, because I think if we need to have that as a point in this, to see if they're willing, the state highway administration would be willing to do that on Bradley. They can probably do it on Connecticut. If we have a problem, they could probably do it on East West Highway if we feel we have a problem there. That would negate the need for us having, possibly negate the need for us having our own program, which is not inexpensive. Because those are the, I'm not sure we would want to have speed control inside the town on our own streets. I just think that's asking for trouble. But so I think those those kind of those two just those two things need to be, we need to factor those before we decide whether or not we want to have a a program in the town. Because we have to get their state highways approval to put any cameras on those on the on those streets, even though half of them are in the town limits. So I I I think we need to get that information before we even think about whether or not we want to have our our own program. It is not, it's not inconsequential. If you read Ron's, I mean, we have to have a certifying officer here in town. They have to be trained every year. They have to be certified every year. You have to hire the contractor. The contractor takes a significant portion of the revenues. We're not allowed to keep all the revenues. I mean, there's all kinds of other issues that, you know, that we really need to think about, but the pacing item is getting the state you know, whether or not they're going to put a camera on on Bradley. That's all. I just throw that out.
Any other comments? I think she's nothing, Rich makes some very good points about and Irene as well, that there's an all in cost that is probably more than we think. And if we can get the state, I mean, I I've not heard yet any desire to have speed cameras other than on, you know, Bradley or East West or Connecticut. I do think speed cameras are very effective, that, you know, they work. And I mean, ideally, someday they don't work because people have adjusted their speeds and, you know, years of experience on Connecticut Avenue, when the camera first went in, you know, you get a ticket or two and haven't gotten one in, you know, fifteen years. So I'm I'm all for seeing if we can leverage the state and do that immediately. And and I think simultaneously asking staff to look into what it would take, including talking with other jurisdictions, I I have. including uh, talking with other jurisdictions. I I have, you know, firsthand experience in College Park where there were tragically some fatalities about 12 years ago and because of its proximity to a school, several speed cameras were put up on Baltimore Avenue, otherwise known as Route One. Uh, speeds reduced tremendously. They're, you know, you know, not a causation, but there hasn't been a fatality since. And the uh, city, um, they didn't do this to get a windfall, but you know, you look at the numbers and there was a huge windfall for the city, um, which isn't the reason to do this at all, but uh, certainly we pay for itself and then some there and we could ask staff to, you know, talk with College Park or other places where they run their own program and see what we go on. So I'm I'm more than anything else, I'm just for getting speed cameras to help in solving the problem that we clearly have, especially on Bradley. Don't feel obligated. I just want to make sure you have the opportunity.
I'll just mention that I, I mean, I share Carlo's um, opinions that it seems important to have speed cameras somehow, and it makes sense to explore the 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 easiest one first, but also if there's some, you know, I agree that it would be good to explore what it would take for the town to do it a little further.
Okay, thank you. Um, my own views are not, I think we're all pretty much on the same page. Certainly that there's there's tremendous importance in having a speed cameras and and having one on Bradley. No question about that. Certainly, if the, if we can get uh, a bi-directional speed camera on the south side, that's great. Where there may be some difference in view, um, I I've been at this and working with SHA in the county for nine years on a variety of these things. Having something in our control really matters. I can't tell you how frustrating it is to sit across the table from state and county officials, as goodwill as they are, but they have their own priorities and they don't put us first. And and the prospect that we have to finally say, we can have speed cameras on the north side of Bradley. We can decide where we want to put them in. We can decide who's going to be the contractor and keep them there 24/7. Not find the county just decides, oh, well, you know, it's time to pull out that camera and we will come back in four months, but we're not going to tell you anyway. By the way, we can't find out. They will not tell us when that camera is sitting in that box. It's nuts. So I'm sorry, I'm getting more emotional, emotional. I thought I would, but I'm telling you how frustrating it is to be across the table on this stuff. So I'm happy to have something that can be done quickly, but I am 100% behind the town having its own program. We do have a neutrality clause from the vendor, so we will not lose money on the out-of-pocket costs. Irene, you're entirely correct that there is some additional expense. We have to know what that is in terms of the timeframe to train up, you know, someone from the town staff and how many hours it will be, and maybe there's some extra cost. I'm fine with that. We're, we have the reserves. We have the revenue. Um, but I think our moving expeditiously through to to answer these good questions that all of you have asked is very important. But to me, I I could change my mind, but as of now, I'm feeling very strongly that I want us to have our own authority and exercise it. Um, I also agree that we need a policy. I think that has to be very important to do. But the one caveat, not caveat, but the one wrinkle I'd like to suggest uh, for us to consider, and I guess to put this back to to Todd and Dave, is precisely because there is such a long lead time to get this camera system that you guys would recommend that we use uh, for just the north side. Um, I'd like to see what we can do to multitask. So for example, can we think about a decision tree or a critical path that not by September, but by, say, July allows us to at least place an order for a camera. And, you know, you can place an order and make a deposit. You could always cancel the if you need to, but at least, no, we can get ourselves in the queue, even if we haven't yet finished all the other steps that we are actually going to want to commit ourselves to. So in other words, I don't know if we have to put the final, you know, dot the final I and cross the final T on a policy before we put in an order for a camera. If we're quite certain that whatever policy we're going to come up with is one that's going to cause us to want at least one camera along Bradley, if we know that, let's let's put in the order and not just find ourselves wrapping ourselves up around the axle with a few more months of delay. So I'd like to think about how we could, before the summertime, before we have going to adjournment, potentially put in an order, not 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 avoiding or not not postponing, but not requiring the complete endpoint of everything else we need to do, just to put in an order, which we know we're going to want down the road anyway. Because once we put in the order, we've still got another seven months before before it goes into place. But anyway, I'd like to think of how we can speed up that schedule and and try to do that.
Let me, let me, let me interject something. You, I feel your pain. And I've I've been, I've been around to feel it and so.
I know you have, and you're probably calmer than I.
So but but it does us no good to have the authority if we can't exercise it. And and so we've got to get.
You're absolutely right. We have to raise the SHA immediately. I agree with that. I'd like that, I'd like that to be on our agenda on the 30th.
Yeah.
That will be. Yeah, I think that's.
No, that that changes the whole ball.
That changed.
I concur with that. Concur.
Yeah.
I think the other thing I'd also like to explore, by the way, the which is interesting is you know, it's a long stretch and and the camera is relatively closer to Connecticut. Uh, so even, you know, there could be a situation where even if you have bi-directional photos there, we would still want our camera, in other words, have both cam, have two cameras basically on different sections of the of that long of of Bradley. I don't know if that's possible or not, but these are the kinds of things I'd like us to discuss.
The town, the village has two cameras, at least. I think they have two.
Yeah.
They may have three at some.
So they are, they are, they aren't mutually exclusive uh, all opportunities. But yes, I completely concur that the SHA has to be approached quickly. I agree with that.
I think we can take care of that in our May 30th meeting and raise that prospect and 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 have it on the uh, have it on their radar very quickly about whether they or not they would approve.
I I would, I I I would also like to to at the May 30th meeting, not just address the Bradley thing, which is critical, but also ask if if we would have the same, if they would grant the authority ex, allow us to exercise our authority on Connecticut and East West as well. So you, let's broaden it to the to all of the state highways around the town.
Right. But I I don't want to, I don't want to uh, let the best be the end. I'm not quite there, but I don't want a situation where they feel they've got to address everything and then that takes an extra six months. So it could be a very targeted request with an additional.
We need to prioritize the Bradley lane issue.
Exactly.
And and that needs to be at the top of the, you know, and then these other things follow from that. So we, you know, but we've got to get, we got to get that nailed down.
Yeah, well, we will start May 30th.
Start on May 30th and I guess uh, we're going to the point you're asking, we want to raise it with SHA immediately. Uh, thank you for offering to draft a policy. We certainly like that to go ahead. Uh, I think, um, what's the other?
I'll need some feedback from the council about what the policy should state, you know, or or do you want to start with only deploying cameras on 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 roads surrounding the town, on state highways? Do you, you want thresholds established or criteria established for deploying potential, responding to potential requests or deployment within the town, internal to the town? How, I need a little bit of feedback on what the policy should state.
Rich, you want to take a lead on that? Not not tonight.
Not tonight. Yeah, because I I I just think we're, it needs to be carefully thought.
Absolutely. We're all on that page. We're not trying to rush that.
Put employing speed cameras with on our own streets is uh, is going to be a unique problem if if we don't think through it.
I I.
About the criteria that we use to place them.
Yeah.
How enforce it, you know, what the fines, I mean, just all kinds of.
Yeah.
Also, the the speed requirements, we have to be at least 12 miles over the speed limit.
You've got to be.
So that may make it virtually.
Yeah. Well, just know that the state passed uh, part of the general assembly um, session this this past spring, they did pass different fine, uh, higher fines, depending on how far over you were. We could just follow that standard um, if we wanted to.
But it's the kind of thing we need to.
The other thing, the other thing, if you could investigate would be, what do you think would be our internal town resources required to administer the program? So we have better sense of that. And also a timeline that takes account, if you can, of my thought of how we can do some dual tracking so that we could potentially order the camera earlier than.
Dual tracking is fine. It's perfectly feasible to do that. And if the council supports it, we can do it. It's just that I think the 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 critical detail will come out of our meeting with the SHA on May 30th. We will know exactly how to proceed, what the criteria are for application, what 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 we need to consider, and if 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 all signs are are green, then if the council's supportive of it, we can dual track, sure.
Good. Okay, thank you. All right, good. Thank you all. Gosh, I didn't know it was going to get so emotional about. Speed campus, but there you go. Um, all right, um, the um, result of the parking study. So just not so much the study, but the the deliberation of the of the Public Services Committee on the issue of parking.
It was great, very special. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, sorry for being late, uh, but my daughter's concert at Silver Creek tonight. Um, Howard Burkhoff, Chair of Public Service Committee. Thanks for having me back for the third straight month. I'm surprised you I'm surprised you continue to extend the invitation. Tried to be tired of me by now, but um, so this past month, the PSC uh, talked about permit parking and really was driven by by a a handful of complaints really in the northwest corner of the town, we'll say the Elm Street, 46, 45th, 44th, um, then that Leland, that two-by-two cor uh, uh, square block there in the northwest corridor, closest to the the Bethesda metro. Complaints have been coming in about um, people parking there, really too fold, one uh, folks without permits parking there, but also residents perception that residents uh, with uh, that don't live in that area. So non-adjacent residents essentially parking in that area. And so the complaints had been coming in about that. Uh, we asked the town to do a study, a parking study, and they did. Um, I I hopefully that was attached or sent around. Um, and they looked at, uh, the town looked at several different timeframes, a weekday morning, weekday afternoon, and and a weekend to get some different data. Um, and uh, bottom line is uh, weekend wasn't really an issue with uh, with parked up spaces. So we'll kind of put that to the side. But the week weekday data did confirm that um, uh, a fair percentage of available parking in in, we'll say, the streets closest to Wisconsin Avenue, closest to downtown Bethesda, especially in that corner uh, are occupied. But it was a mix of uh, folks uh, without parking permits, and I think that's that's one issue um, to talk about. And then the second are the not, we'll say, non-adjacent residents that are parking there. When when you really distill the data, um, and really look at the data, again, this is a small snapshot. So this is just, you know, um, a a couple of different data points. You see that you you can jump to, you you can come to a conclusion based on a small sample of data that's approximately five to 10 residents are parking in that area, in that region, right? Not all in the same spot, but Elm 46 seemed to be the predominance, but you know, a couple of other streets. Um, and and it appears that they're parking for a longer period of time, right? So one could one could conclude that they are parking and working, whether they're going to the metro, whether working downtown and then coming back and leaving at the end of the day. Okay. So that's the premise. Um, first, you know, I I'll kind of get back to the, you know, what what the committee talked, we talked for hours about this topic. It was a very um, lot of interesting discussion and you know, uh, for those without permits that are parking in that area, and and it's a fair amount of them that are taking up parking spaces. Um, some of them are contractors, right? And we talked um, uh, with with Dave and Dave mentioned, generally, the town doesn't give out permits to contractor. That's that's a, you know, maybe that's something we look into, right? So especially in that area. And then, you know, there's delivery vehicles and other stuff um, that that come in and out, but basically folks without permits that are parking in there easily, much more easily enforceable is the bottom line, right? So that's 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 more easily enforceable. And if the if the council wanted to, we can talk about, or or you can talk about and talk with the town about enforcing, you know, providing uh, guest permits for contractors to help distinguish them a little bit more so. And and one note to those with permits, um, do you have guest passes? So we can't use that as an excuse. If I have a friend or you have a guest pass, give it to your your family member. Okay, so let's talk about five to 10, we'll say, folks who are parking there. So we we really talked about about that this for a long time and and whether it made sense to create a a secondary zone, uh, a more exclusive zone in the two-by-two area. But you know, there there might be some unintended consequences there, right? Might push people out further, um, you know, is that something we want to do? Is a handful of complaints, you know, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of issues around that. We talked about permitting the whole town and having then a secondary, you know, parking area. And we and we did cover that. We talked about um, whether they have different zones and layers and um, in the whole town. And and ultimately, you know, there's pros and cons to all of them. Um, and and we went round and round and had different opinions on that. Um, talked about driveway availability, um, walk the area and basically, you know, every every driveway, every house has a different driveway situation. Newer newer builds tend to have more driveway space. Um, some of the older uh, houses have lesser driveway space, you know, it it just varies across the board. So um, so we went through all these different kind of options about, you know, and we even talked about, hey, you know, there's there's a big segment of town that's you know, has asked for permit that's more, let's say, on the east side, you know, kind of hugs the purple line. We talked about, well, do do those sections really need to be permitted? And do we think, rethink the, so we went through many, many different permutations. At the end of the day, after a couple hours of discussion, I said, all right, we got to come to some consensus here, right? So I went, used my old strategy of of uh, with the Stanford Hill, and I polled each and every person individually. And at the end of the day, we came to a consensus amazingly, right? Amazingly. So we felt that, you know, with just really a handful of residents complaining and really a small number of folks um, that seemed to be, you know, you could argue abusing the, you know, the the non-adjacent parking. The ju, we just felt the juice wasn't worth the squeeze to implement a either a secondary parking zone or create a, you know, entire town permitted parking and having a secondary zone. We just didn't, we didn't feel the pros outweighed the outweighed the cons. And we we just felt like we'd just be pushing the problem or or creating new problems, unintended consequences. So at the end of the day, we reckon the PSC came to a consensus and recommended no further action on actual permitted parking. What the the committee did recommend, and and look, we were very, um, we want, we want, we want to communicate to the local residents that had concerns that we we really do care. We're listening to you. Like, we value your feedback. Um, we're not, we don't, we're not ignoring you, but we just, you know, and there's things we can do, you know, I I know the town, you know, if there's moving trucks comes in or special contractors, I mean, the town is is very amicable about working with you and putting them up, you know, temporary no parking zones to allow moving trucks and stuff like that. So there's things we can help neighbors out as needed. Um, but what the the PSC did recommend at the end of the day was, hey, let's go on a a marketing camp or or communications campaign. Let's ramp up our communications to our residents and politely ask them to um, be be respectful about parking, about non-adjacent parking, just kind of remind them that parking, especially in that corner is you know, can at different times can get relatively full, although the data says it never got 100% full. Um, so maybe a better a communications campaign and and just trying to ask neighbors um, to do that. Um, and and um, uh, let's see, and yeah, and and so focusing on communications and 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 see how that goes. Um, uh, right. And and so and so that, that's what we recommended. Now, I, there's an anecdotal story I did want to share. So after this discussion, I happened to, at one of these socials, I happened to be talking to someone who just freely confessed to me that uh, this person uh, during uh, because of return office as a federal employee, this person um, has a daughter at Chevy Chase Elementary School, is a single parent living in town. And, and when this person has their daughter, has to drop her daughter off, then run, then is one of these offenders, one of these five to 10 people that parks closest to the metro, runs the metro, goes into the office for five hours, comes, runs back and picks up her daughter at the end of the day. And, and like, this was like the return to office mandate forced her to change because she was teleworking, I think nine out of 10 days a week. So it wasn't, wasn't one of those. So then it made me think, wow, there are interesting circumstances that have, have caused maybe an increase in, in we'll say people non-adjacent parking in, in the corner near the metro. And I wonder how many stories are like that out there that of those five to 10 people, you know, how many of those people have a kind of a unique circumstance that made me feel empathetic for this person because of the administration policies requiring return to office and no more, you know, telework and people having to do that. So it's just an anecdote that, that maybe made me think about that. So that's where we're at. We recommended no action, but to do a communications campaign and, 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 and go from there. I'm sure permit parking will come up again when Corso Chevy Chase opens up and we'll create a new set of problems. I'm sure it'll come up again when Bethesda Market Park development comes and we see what happens there. It's probably not the end of the story, but for now, at this point, the P S C recommends no further actions on permitted parking.
Thank you very much, Howard. I was the liaison to the committee during these discussions. So let me just add the first is correct. The data shows literally just a couple of blocks where there's really an issue. And it's never entirely congested, but substantially so. And there were on a couple of circumstances, a number of cars of parties that were, had permits, but did not live in that immediate area. But just to what, what, what helped me in that discussion with the committee was realizing exactly what, what Howard referred to as the unintended consequences. If you carved out just a couple, you know, a few blocks of that northwest corner of town as, as being its own separate zone from everything around it and the rest of the permitted area. You raise two issues. One is, all right, so people such as this mother, instead of parking there, now just moves and parks one block further away. And the congestion just moves, which doesn't solve the problem. The other is that, that now you've set up another wall in effect. In other words, people are legally parking on this block, but if for some reason they park one block away, they're now, their permit is no longer valid, which both can be irritating to the resident and also set up an enforcement issue, which is, you know, not easy to enforce. So that's what I took on board in terms of the unintended consequences. And, and I think we have to be thoughtful about what the communication plan might be in terms of saying, you know, we're not questioning a right. I'm not saying what the words would be, but the concept being, but be respectful and look for a block where you don't see a whole lot of parking where it's comfortable to park. And so maybe that means someday you park in that corner, another day you park two blocks away. But, you know, just, just be reasonable. And we'll see how far that gets us. And maybe that plus a little more stringent enforcement of people who don't have permits at all.
Yeah.
You know, it's all.
I, I meant to emphasize that again, and I mentioned it earlier. It is the continued, and I know it has started, the continued increased enforcement of non-permitted parking people. And, and then, you know, making sure contractors have permits to help, help address that. That's, that's another option to help.
I, I, my concern is the unintended consequence of we, we have this zone. We can't, we can't ticket people who don't have parking passes right now enough. So we're just going to exacerbate that problem. We're just going to have a rule that we can't enforce or we don't enforce. But it's, I, I think it's imperative that we start, we start enforcing the, the citations for people that don't have permits starting very soon because we're going, that whole area of construct, that all of the stuff that's going to happen there. We need to get people used to the idea that they can't park there. And the more, the sooner we do that, the better. So I, you know, Todd's given us many reasons why we can't tell the police what to do, but I think we can tell them we want increased enforcement and in those areas and they'll do that for us.
I have and they are.
Yeah. And, yeah. So it's just imperative that we do that.
We saw that in the last month, by the way. Did you see the, the results of the?
Yes, the numbers.
It doubles the number of parking citations. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So I, I think that's, that'll go a long way. I, I must admit, I am, I am a guilty party of if I order a pizza, you're going to know this down.
License plate number, please.
Pizza from Papa John's, I'll hop in my car and I live on Leland. Instead of walking up there, I'll go up to the corner and park on, in a town where I'm not supposed to park, run across the street for five minutes and pick up a pizza. So, and I think that's okay. You know, it's the people, I think it's, I think it's if we, we take up their spaces forever, you know, have eight hours of, you know, and, and that's another problem. But, and I did, I have, from the prior iteration where we were talking about the street layouts and stuff. One of the things that I, I always do is walk and find out what's actually there. There isn't any house on that stretch that doesn't have at least two parking spaces. They may have to be.
There were some tight ones.
But there are some tight, but they all have, they all have. And there was nobody, you go there, there's no cars in those.
Right.
So they're for their convenience, they're parking in front of their house.
Right.
And I, I guess for some, some people, I say for my convenience, I'd like to be able to park there for five or 10 minutes to do an errand in town as long as I come back and clear the area. So that's my own personal.
Any other comments on the recommendation? So I think, so I would say there's a consensus, let me just, consensus is no change in our parking policy at the moment, but we should have proceeded with the communications campaign. An increased enforcement of people who don't have any permit at all. On the communications, does our new community liaison like to work on that with our new liaison to the public service committee? Okay. And if we can. Yeah, sometimes her position as the community liaison. Yeah, we go in the forecast, we could also have a town crier. We would.
We, we can, we can do it in our section, in the P S C section at the next opportunity. I can take that action.
That's fine, too.
Have something.
And you also picked up the, for, for the meeting you're going to have on Monday, that if there are other issues that people at Bradley would like to raise other than the ones that were in Edman's email that we all had, that they may want to come and talk about some of them.
Want to add that to the topic on Monday? Okay.
Right.
Got it.
Okay. Anything else on that? All right. Irene, over to you for the discussion of the survey.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you. And I want to acknowledge Maria Pecola online as well, who's one of the co-chairs for this year's climate and environment committee, who unfortunately couldn't join us in, in person this evening, but happy to talk about a survey. So from, as, as the liaison this year to the climate and environment committee, one of the main objectives for the year was to produce a survey, a residence survey, so that the committee members could find out where residents are with respect to their sustainable habits. And, and it would be helpful to be able to distribute a survey so that it informs the committee on the types of programs, policy recommendations, things that they should be focusing their efforts on. There's a lot of great ideas that these committee members have, but this, the intent of this survey is to be able to, you know, focus efforts to make sure it's in line with what residents themselves are thinking about. Within your packet, there's a link that you can go directly and kind of play around with the survey. But then for your, for some people, it's easier to just read out every question. There's logic, meaning if you answered a certain way, yes or no, then you either are shown the following question or are not, or it's skipped. But effectively, we're trying to get information with respect to baseline electrification, residential electrification, use of native plants, potentially, you know, incorporation of solar or renewable energy and composting and recycling efforts. And what I, I wanted to talk about with the council tonight is just the concept of the survey as if possible to go through it and provide any comments on maybe a rewording of a question, maybe the adding of a question or perhaps taking away. The intent is just to gather information, not necessarily educate different residents. We can do that later, depending on the survey results. And the, the second part is we want to be able to hear from as many residents as possible. Should, should this be something that the council approves as, as being distributed, of course? And one of the best ways to do that is to offer an incentive to fill out the survey, which is what we were thinking initially was to have five $100 gift cards given out to those that submitted a, a full survey. They'd be eligible and it'd be just a random drawing. That way, we would not only just hear from people who are already on the sustainable bandwagon, but we'd hear from everybody. And this is something that's helpful for town council members and that, you know, you, you spend a lot of time putting together policies and, and programs and all this kind of stuff. And, and when it comes up for public hearing, then you hear from everyone else that says, oh, I, I just realized that you're thinking about this policy and I think it's terrible idea. I'd rather that we know about this stuff upfront rather than afterwards. So incentivizing what is right now, if, if everything stays the same, it's about a six to seven minutes survey, six to seven minutes of person's time. So a hundred dollars, the chance to win a hundred dollar gift card might be worth their time there. So if it's possible tonight, just to let me know if that's something that is in agreement, the idea of the survey. And then assuming that we're good with that, if, if it would be great if you could provide any comments on the survey, assuming that we're good to go by like the first week of June. The intent would be to incorporate that feedback back to the committee members. There's going to be new chairs, but go back to the committee and then maybe distribute this survey in September when everybody's back from vacations. So that's all I had.
Thank you. Comments on a survey and on an incentive of some sort to encourage broader participation from the town residents.
Is there much evidence that having an incentive changes the turnout either in number or representation? I mean, if the idea is to get because, I mean, you know, sometimes people who are interested in the topic will fill it out, whether there's an incentive or not. If you're not interested in it, you don't think you're going to win anyway. Is there any data that's worth whether that would be?
Are we saying in general or for the town? Yeah, it's a good question. I, I've not, I've not done that research. It just intuitively felt like that might, because historically, the, in the last few years, the town surveys have been around things like the four H, you know, what sort of amenities would, would town residents like to see? We did one for Bethesda Market Park as well, what sort of amenities and the reason. Zimmerman as well and reasonably good turnout, but not, not overwhelming. But I, it's a great question. I can feel, I can get in, see if I can get information as disproving or proving that that's a good way to go about it.
Another idea there, and I'm not a survey expert, but if you want a representative sample, you know, you can figure that out somehow demographically and just send out the surveys to that, you know, the, so rather than anybody can fill out a survey and just every fourth house or whatever technique you want to use might be a way to.
Assuming they fill it out, the every fourth house.
I just, I'm, I, I think it's a, it's a topic that's worth surveying. I'm supportive of that. Survey design is really important. There's something about, you know, bribing somebody to do the survey just doesn't feel right to me.
Okay, that's, that's fair.
Taking on my new role as treasurer here, so. Particularly attentive to that.
Makes sense.
I mean, I like the survey to find out what, what the status of the town is in, in, in terms of sustainability. But, I mean, there's some things in here that I, I, I'm not sure why we asked the question, what, 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 what it was helpful to us as a town, what getting that information. So do you want, do you want us to comment individually on some of these questions?
Not tonight, not tonight.
No, no, no. Yeah, we can have a separate discussion on it and I can provide, like, this is what the members were thinking. Yeah.
And going through it, they were just, I said, why in the world do we need to know that information to help us do anything?
Yep.
It does, you know, just adds to the length of the survey and doesn't, doesn't give us anything.
Okay, fair.
But do you have any views about an incentive?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm with Carlo.
Okay.
Being the next treasurer, I don't see much need for incentivized. All right. People that are well incentivized personally themselves almost in this town anyhow, so.
I guess, you know, I'm thinking about it. On the one hand, you know, it might make it sort of fun for people to like, think they're, you know, entering sort of a raffle, but I also think, what about other surveys, you know? Are we going to do it as a matter of practice? Because I know there are other subjects that we like to survey about. And I mean, it might, we might just sort of find that, will it lessen people's interest? Some people's interest in other surveys. So I kind of like the idea of people answering because they care about the issues and they, and they want to provide feedback to the town without that added, you know, rationale. I mean, that's just what I'm thinking now.
Okay.
All right.
I also strongly support the survey and I provided Irene with some, I have some comments on the questions also. I think it needs some further work. But I think in principle, it's a very good idea. And it could set up a variety of good further town programs or communications on a variety of issues that, that get at how people who care, at the end of the day, have to care, can reduce their carbon footprint and, and what the cost would be of doing that of different programs. I think there's, as, as educated as a lot of people in this town are about a lot of these things, there's still, these programs change all the time. They're complex. They involve various state subsidies and grants and county issues. I mean, it's, there's a lot. So getting at what, what helping, the survey helping to orient the town and the, the climate and environment committee to what they in turn can help residents achieve and take advantage of. I think it's all great. I, I was, Irene had talked to me before about it and I was sort of sitting on the fence, but I've listened to you colleagues and I'm, I'm in agreement. Let's not have an incentive.
Okay.
Got that.
Yeah. And I just want to compliment the climate and environment committee and the, about some of the things they've done in the past. Because I've learned more in some of these workshops that they've had with, you know, the Echo Green, Echo Fest and stuff like that. And, and if that helps them target the kind, those kinds of things they want to have for the town, I'm all for that. It really, it, it was useful.
Okay. Last thing I just want to add to the agenda, but very, very short. One minute on the Bethesda Market Parks. This of course is, has been stalled for months and months and months while pending a agreement between the developers and the county, which would obligate the county to reimburse the developers for the cost of the design of the public portion of the garage. And this is an agreement that understandably the developers feel is essential for them to proceed with what for them will be a multimillion dollar process of doing sufficient amount of design to submit the site plan to the planning board. There already is an agreement in place for the Parks Department to reimburse the developers for the. There already is an agreement in place for the Parks Department to reimburse the developers for the cost of designing the park. So in a sense, this is a parallel agreement. That agreement has finally been finished. The county has signed it, at least the county attorney has assigned it. The developer has reviewed it and the important decision is that they've taken is that they will go forward and committing themselves to spending the money for the, for the work, the design work associated with submitting a site plan. That's a non trivial decision in the context of all the uncertainty of the economic climate in Montgomery County at this moment. So we're very encouraged to have that. They do have some further work they're doing on planning at the moment, so they don't expect to execute their, the agreement for probably another three or four weeks, but that, once they work out those kinks, they will be signing it. And that will then allow us to get back to the table for the, what is probably a four, maybe five month process of all the design work for the project. And that is when we in the town will be very intimately involved in review of the plans for the park and for the amenities in the park. So that's something that will could start during the summer, but will certainly be engaged with over the fall with the hope that the site plan might still be submitted by the end of this calendar year. So that would be great. It might slip, it slipped every, I've been wrong all the time on this schedule. So I don't know, the only reason why I should suddenly be right. But in any event, it is a good sign that they want to proceed with the with the project design. So with that, is there anything else? Very well over time, but good discussion. Then I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all very much. And thank you for the residents for staying and listening to all of this.